Good evening. I call this October 27th, 2020 meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching a recording of this meeting. To maintain the safety of town residents, staff, and the town council while following guidelines related to social distancing and limited public gatherings, this meeting is being facilitated electronically via Teams meeting. All council members will be able to fully participate in this evening's work. Active citizen participation is always important to the town council. Public comments were accepted from 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. today. This meeting is being streamed on the Town of Morrisville Facebook page, and on October 30th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. A link to this page will also be placed on the Town of Morrisville social media pages. Tonight's meeting includes three public hearings. Public hearing comments received from interested parties providing full name and address via the publichearings@townofmorrisville.org email address from 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. today will be read verbatim during the public hearing for up to three minutes each, for a total of 30 minutes. Please visit www.townofmorrisville.org for updates regarding future town council meetings, or feel free to email townclerk@townofmorrisville.org with any questions. At this time, I'm going to ask Eric Smith, our town clerk, to conduct a roll call of council members. Mr. Smith?
Mayor Colley?
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Fender?
Present.
Councilmember Garamella?
Present.
Councilmember Rao?
Present.
Councilmember Robati?
Present.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Present.
All councilors present.
Thank you, sir. Prior to further action, I will ask if there is a motion and second to invoke Rule 19. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Steve Rao.
I make a motion that we invoke Rule 19.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati.
I second the motion.
Okay. If Town Clerk Smith can do a roll call on the motion to invoke Rule 19, please.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to invoke Rule 19 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, town council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Do any council members have any such conflicts?
None.
Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion and second to adopt this evening's agenda? Recognize Councilmember Rao?
I'm mayor and council and I make a motion that we adopt this evening's agenda, October 27th, 2020 meeting.
I recognize Councilmember Robati.
I second.
Okay. If Town Clerk Smith can please do a roll call vote on that motion, please.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the regular agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, that was the motion to adopt Rule 19.
No, that was, Rule 19 was before.
Okay, sorry. I'm, it's so small font.
Yes, it is.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
So we've done our roll call of council members, we've done 19, and now we have to adopt tonight's agenda. Now we're going to move on to consent. So let me, there are five items on the consent agenda this evening: approval of the September meeting minutes and a resolution authorizing Morrisville Carpenter Road Improvement Construction Contract. At this time, I'd like to ask if any council members would like to have anything removed from the agenda for discussion. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
Thank you. Yes, I'd ask that we remove the minutes from September 21st and ask staff to go back and review the tape for one section for a little more clarification.
Okay, so we will remove that item. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Yes, I would like to request that we remove the Morrisville Carpenter Road construction item and have it brought up in item number six on the agenda. So not to remove it, you know, from the meeting, just to take it out of the consent portion.
Understood. We'll address them in item six just next. Okay, so that appears to be the only two things that wish to be removed. I would entertain a motion at this time to approve the consent agenda without items 5B as in Bravo and 5E as in Echo, if someone would like to make that motion, please. I recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
I will make that motion.
I recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
I would second that motion.
Thank you. Town Clerk Smith, if you would please do a roll call vote on the amended consent agenda motion.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the consent agenda with the removal of items 5B and 5E passes unanimously.
Okay, we are now at item six, items pulled from the consent agenda. So if Mayor Protem Johnson, if you want to expand a little bit and indicate what you would hope to, for us to revisit it for item 5B.
Just ask staff to review the, and I'm sorry, I don't have the pages in front of me. The, it's toward the bottom of the minutes, just to review the tape and add some context to some of the conversation there. And then bring it back at the next meeting is fine, or however it falls as far as workload.
Okay, staff, is that clear enough for you?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay.
It's not really that clear, but I could give you the pages.
Yeah, you can take that offline.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And I'll look in the chat, does, do any council members have any objection with handling it in that manner?
As long as it comes back to a meeting where we vote on it, that's fine.
Okay, good point. Okay, I think we have consensus from the group that that's how we'll handle that. Now, item 5E, if Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, if you'd like to ask your questions now on that item?
Thank you, mayor. This item is relating to the construction of the Morrisville Carpenter Road project, and we've had a delay in the original awarding of this contract. And I do have a very few specific questions about the construction item in general. And it's probably more financial than, actually, and there is a contract question too. The first question is, the way the resolution is written, it talks about the town's portion of the contract, and I was just wondering if we could state what is the total price. I don't think we need to amend the resolution, but it would be helpful to understand what the total cost of this project is.
So Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, I'll, I'll try to answer that question. What you have in front of you is actually the construction contract award, and as you've accurately described, a project costs more than just the construction. So the total project costs were estimated to be $9 million. That was several years ago. For years, as you've mentioned, we've worked on right-of-way acquisition, design work for the road project, utility relocations. There is then the construction contract award, and because this is an NC DOT road, we are also required to have construction engineering inspection throughout the life of the contract. So those costs accumulate to closer to the $9 million than just this contract award. Staff is preparing a summary of those project costs, and the LAP award that we received for this will cover up to $6.3 million of that estimate based on actual costs, and the town will match with 30% of the actual costs.
So just so that my math is understanding, so it's possibly about $3 million that the town would be providing as a contribution to this project?
For the construction, the, the, the 30% match would be up to $2.7 million. But you are correct, if there were significant overruns, those costs would be borne by the town.
Okay, great. And so the funding source is really a mix of the NC DOT LAP funds and also the town monies. And is there, isn't there a transportation kind of fund that we have internally that would help support a lot of these costs?
As a part of the funding for this project, council previously approved a $2.7 million installment financing that we've already secured to support some of the costs of the project.
Excellent. And then the last one is regarding reimbursement. Is, NC DOT is having some challenges with managing cash flow, and, you know, obviously, we've now gotten to a point where they have mitigated some of that issue. So is the town providing the funding for this and getting reimbursements? Or are we only putting in the portion that we need to put in over time? I'm just not as clear about how, we had talked about many scenarios when we were considering restarting this project, and I just wanted to know where we kind of landed.
Yes, ma'am, the LAP funding program requires the town to enter into the contract and to have the financial resources to encumber the full amount of the contract. So the town will encumber the full costs that are being requested here of $6 million, 4,000, et cetera, plus some contingency. We will then, as project progress is made, be able to submit to NC DOT reimbursement requests, which will then get processed in a manner of the approval as we can request approximately half of that amount in this coming, this current fiscal year, the remainder in the next fiscal year. And according to the timeline, staff does not feel that we will get delayed in being reimbursed for some middle requests.
That is great news. One of the challenges with this road is it is so popular, and we have another construction project going on with Thornberry, and potentially, we've just approved some other property being developed in the corner of Town Hall and Morrisville Carpenter. So there could be up to three concurrent projects during this duration, and I believe it's 18 months is what I heard. So is there a possibility to do night construction? I didn't see it in the resolution. I don't know if that level of detail is, is really in the contract itself.
Now I'm going to turn it back over to your town engineer, Mark Spanioli.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Hi, good evening, council. No, we don't have any nighttime work anticipated or planned for this project. It will be daytime activities only at this time. We may do some, at the very tail end of the project, to wrap up the final paving of the project. We may do some nighttime paving, but that, we haven't negotiated that yet with the contractor at this time.
Okay, that's very helpful. Those are all my questions. I think that, you know, the cash flow and the funding is such an important part of this project, and I really do appreciate all the prompt answers and work on this project. And the neighborhoods along Morrisville Carpenter had some information sessions, so these were some questions that I don't think were necessarily covered during those sessions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. Did anyone have any questions for town engineer Spanioli while I have him here? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson. I recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
I'm sorry, I was on mute. I apologize. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-284-0 of the Morrisville Town Council authorizing the execution of a contract with Carolina Sunrock LLC for construction of the Morrisville Carpenter roadway improvement project.
I have a motion. Would anyone like to make a second? I recognize Councilmember Robati.
I second.
Excellent. Town Clerk Smith, if you could please do a roll call vote on that motion.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. We are now at item seven, presentations. We have two presentations tonight, an FY20 audit slash CAFR and presentation, and a town center draft RFP. I'll recognize Nancy Emmonsley, Finance Director, to make the FY20 audit CAFR presentation. Is Emmonsley?
Good evening, and good evening, mayor and council members. It is my pleasure to be here with you, albeit virtually, this evening, to share with you our audit, our audit experience and the preparation of the comprehensive annual financial report, officially known as the CAFR, and this is for fiscal year 2020. A PDF version of the CAFR has been provided to you, and a printed bound copy will be delivered to you once it is ready for distribution. Also, a PDF copy of the audit presentation you see in front of you now, and this presentation will be by April Adams, that was also provided to you as well. I must admit that the latter part of fiscal year 20 was certainly challenging, and that was due to the pandemic. We were very fortunate that we had transitioned to a new ERP system with the EnerGov module and the Munis financial modules, since it allowed staff to work remotely and work remotely effectively. We have not, we would not have been able to do this had we been in the old legacy system. We also went live with the HR payroll module this year in April, and we successfully completed that implementation also remotely. And I want to mention, speaking of the pandemic, fiscal year 20 did result in a positive change in net position for the town. You will find comments on the effect of COVID-19 in the introductory section, the management discussion and analysis section, and the notes section of the CAFR. So we did see an effect of COVID-19. The, we will know more about how it will affect fiscal year 21 as that, as that year commences. I'd like to publicly thank the members of our finance department for their hard work, their thoroughness, and their dedication. Staff members kept the daily operations running while we focused on the audit and the CAFR preparation, which is truly a team effort. And again, a big thank you to my staff. I truly appreciate all that they do. And, and finally, I'd like to say that I'm very pleased to let town council know that there were no period 13 or adjusting journal entries from our auditor. So another, another clean, good audit from, from Terry Becker. And at this point, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mark Stevens, our controller, who's going to tell you a little bit more about the audit process and the CAFR preparation that is, that we, that we do every year. And then he will also introduce April Adams as well. So, Mark, take it away.
Thank you, Nancy. As Nancy was saying, the preparation of the CAFR is really a team effort. Nancy focuses on the letter transmittal and some of the MDNA sections of the CAFR, which allows me to spend most of my time focusing on the financial statements section and footnotes of the CAFR. It's, it's a, it's a large undertaking, and it takes a team effort to get it done. Once, once we complete the audit and some of the field work, we really start to dive into preparation of the CAFR. And it usually takes a month just to draft it. There are, you know, 140-plus pages and several schedules that have to be completed. But once we have completed the draft, me and Nancy review it, then we forward it to Jeannie and Martha for their review. And once we have their feedback and corrections, then I'll complete it. We forward it on to the staff at Cherry Beck and Holler, where it goes to their review process, and then we have our finished product tonight. And I'll speak a little bit on the audit process this year. This was an unusual year, of course. I've been in local government audits for almost 20 years, and I've never done one completely virtual. So some people will be happy not to see the auditors, but I was kind of missing them. So they, we had the, the challenges of trying to get the information to them, and as Nancy mentioned, it would have been much more difficult in the legacy system to try to get this information to them and back and forth. So we are very fortunate that we were in Munis and able to do this virtually in our system. And also, part of the process too, that we did have nine months of the fiscal year. We were still in the legacy HR payroll system, so we were still technically working out of two systems. And I would like to personally thank Alex Harris, who is the lead on our audit engagement. He was very helpful and resourceful in making this possible, so a special thank you to him. And with that, I will turn it over to April Adams, who is a partner with Cherry Becker and Holler, and she will give you the audit finding.
Thanks, Mark. All right, so as Mark mentioned, we did do this audit completely remotely. Thank goodness on our side that the firm was, was prepared for that, that same, in that same manner. We had changed some systems and ways, ways that we had been doing business and conducting audits over the most recent years, and so it was an easy transition to go completely remotely and keep things on track and be reporting this report to you tonight, just like we would any other October. All right, so I am here to deliver the results. I'm just gonna do a high-level overview of what the role of the external auditor is. Then I'll go over the results themselves. I just want to high-level talk about what we do with internal controls and identify the significant audit areas. And then I've got just a couple of slides with very high-level financial results that I've pulled from the CAFR for you. And then I'll do a quick summary of what you should take away from the presentation, and then I'll be glad to take any questions or comments. All right, awesome. All right, so the role of the external auditor. We do perform your audit in accordance with some, two sets of auditing standards. One is just the generally accepted auditing standards, so any audit that gets conducted in the United States gets done under those audit standards. And then we add the second audit standards, the government audit standards, because you're a government entity. But both of those audit standards require that we plan and perform procedures to obtain reasonable assurance that your financial statements are free from material misstatement. And I bring that to your attention to, to tell you that we do a risk-based audit. So we're focused, our audit procedures, on where we think those financial statements are at highest risk of being materially misstated. So that means that we didn't come in and test every single transaction that happened throughout the year, but we do do procedures that help us get that assurance that it's, that the numbers are fairly stated. Once we're done with all our procedures, we are required to express an opinion based on that. Because we do the audit under two sets of auditing standards, we issue two opinions. Also, in prior years, you see the numbers of opinions change from year to year. In the, in the current year, your levels of state and federal grant expenditure expenditures didn't rise to the level that would require what we call a single audit. So you've only got two opinions and not three or four versus, you know, any other year. And then finally, the audit standards require us to communicate certain things to board, to the Board of Governance that may have occurred throughout the year, and so we do that in two ways. One is this presentation that I'm giving currently, and the second way of doing that, communicating the information is a letter that will accompany your financial statements. The types of things that that letter brings to your attention are if there were significant changes in accounting policies. It identifies what the significant estimates are in your financial statements, because those are more subject to change as they carry out in future years. And it also would identify if any journal entries were identified as a result of the audit. All right, so this next slide shows the key results and highlights from the financial statement audit. As I mentioned, we issued two opinions. Both of those opinions are unmodified opinions. I know that sounds not wonderful, but it is. Those are the opinions that you want. You want an unmodified opinion. They're also known as clean opinions, and they are the highest level of assurance that we can give you that your financial statements are free from all those material misstatements that we were looking for. The audit standards also require us to look at internal controls. While we don't opine on them, we do do a review, and I'll cover that on the next slide. But I'm happy to report that we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in our review of your internal controls. As I mentioned, your federal and state expenditures of grants did not rise to the level of needing a single audit in the current year. So you'll see that that was blank on the slide for this year. And then the required communications, so again, that's that two-page letter that accompanies your financial statements. There were no significant changes in accounting policies in the current year that we need to make you aware of. The estimates in your financial statements are no different than any, any of the prior years. You've got your allowance on your doubtful accounts, your depreciation related to the lives that you assign to your capital assets. You've got a couple of pension and OPEB liabilities that are on your financial statements, along with the deferred inflows and outflows related to that, or all estimates in your financial statements. And then finally, there were no journal entries to report that came up as a result of the audit. And what that means is that the books and records that Mark and Nancy gave us to audit are properly reflecting all the activity of the town and that no additional changes needed to be made from that based on the information they provided us. All right, so a quick little bit on internal controls. As I mentioned, we don't opine on internal controls, but we are required to look at them. So what we do is what we identify, what we consider to be the significant transaction cycles of information that flows through the town. We do, we consider that to be payroll control cycle, the cash receipts, the cash disbursements, and how the books are closed and wrapped up into this financial report that Mark so diligently worked on for the last month. What we do is obtain an understanding of all those processes, and we do what we call a walkthrough of one, which means we're testing one transaction and kind of walking it through all the, from the initiation all the way through the reporting of that transaction cycle. The audit standards also require us to do certain things with journal entries. So we do do a review. We get a data dump of all the manual journal entries that happen throughout the year. And then we're mine that, that list of journal entries, looking for unusual transactions. We'll pull a sample related to that mining of the information and ask for the supporting documentation for each of those journal entries, looking for the actual journal entry itself. Does it make sense based on the supporting documentation? And then is it, is it properly reviewed and approved and hitting the accounts that we would think it would need to hit? And then finally, we're also required to look at information technology controls. And so we do, we, we ask, we send out a questionnaire to the town, and they complete it. And then we just, it's just a general, very high-level review of the general computer controls. Who has access to the system? Are, you know, are, are passwords required? Is there, is there physical security to the system onsite, et cetera? So no issues were noted as a result of that review of internal controls. When it comes to significant audit areas, as I mentioned, we do a risk-based audit. So we're looking for, and deciding in our judgment what the significant audit areas are. Typically, those are going to be the larger balances that you see on your financial statements, because they're obviously going to have the bigger chance of being materially misstated, because they're large in themselves. But this is where we spend the But this is where we spend the most of our time during the audit. We are auditing them and testing them sustainably, which means we're either confirming them with third party. We're testing them, the relationships of the numbers analytically or doing what we call predictive test. And then if we have to, we'll do a test of details. We're pooling a sample of transactions in order to gain confidence that the numbers are fairly stated. All right. So now I'm going to move into some financial results. This first slide is just going to highlight for you the budget to actual for the general fund. So at the beginning of the year, the council sets out a budget for the general fund. And this is just showing you the results of how that fund performed in accordance to, to the budget set before it. So in total revenues beat your budget of revenues for the fund by 642,000. And then you're on the expenditure side, the budget, the expenditure. And so you want the budget, the revenues to be over budget and you want the expenditures to be under budget. So the expenditures were under budget by 5,470,000. Another thing to bring to your attention is that in the final budget for the year, the town had appropriated the use of fund balance by 9.9 million dollars. And, and what ended up happening in total for that fund is that you only had to use 3.8 of your total fund balance. There are a couple of things that, that led to these results, especially on the expenditure side, is that there were a lot of capital projects that were budgeted to be, several capital projects that were budgeted to be completely finished by 2020 that weren't. To the tune of 2.3 million, there were some lapped salaries in there of 1.2 million. And then several departments just simply spent less than what was budgeted for about 2.1 million to make up that difference between the 9.9 and the 3.8. All right. Onto the next slide. So still looking at the general fund, we just wanted to look at the fund balance, how it ended up for the year. So the town has a policy to maintain three months or 25% of the expenditures in the unassigned fund balance category for the general fund. And I've just shown you current year to the prior year. The current year ended up at 36.98% of the general fund expenditures. So well above the 25% and in compliance with the fund policy, the town policy for the fund balance. All right. This next slide is just giving you a snapshot of your total capital asset balance, which is 166.9 million. That number increased 10 million from the prior year. And this is just kind of showing you the different things that went into the addition. You added some infrastructure. You had some other improvements. You had 1.6 million dollars worth of new vehicles. That included a ladder fire truck and just various vehicles through, for the other departments. And then the big ticket item is the continued construction in progress projects that you have going on, specifically the McCrimmon Parkway extension, as well as renovations to your aquatic and fitness center. And all of that is offset, of course, by the annual depreciation that averages about 3 million a year. All right. And then this is the last of the financial results, your long-term debt. You've got a total of about 46 million dollars worth of debt. And this is just showing you the breakdown of what makes up that 46 million. There was no new debt issued in the current year. So the only really activity you see is the pay down of the installment notes of 2.2 million in the current year, as well as the G O bonds. And then your O P E V and pension and vacation are all subject to an actuary report. So they all increased slightly, but the big ticket thing here is just that you're, that you paid down debt this year versus taking any out. All right. And then so in summary, you received clean opinions, no journal entries identified as a result of the audit. There are good internal controls in place, no significant deficiencies. And again, it being 2020 and doing everything virtually, we absolutely appreciate the cooperation and effort on, on the town side to provide us the information in a, in a slightly different format than years before. But we, we enjoy the relationship, even though we're, we're auditing and questioning everything. We enjoy working with management and, and conducting this audit. And so now I'd be glad to take any questions or comments.
Do any council members have questions for Ms. Adams, Ms. Emslie or Mr. Stevens? Okay. Well, we would like to thank you very much for your time and effort. I know this is a really heavy lift. Stevens, Mr. Stevens, thank you for spending that month getting everything just so. Nancy, for herding the cats. And Ms. Adams, thank you again for another year of good audit. I would now like to recognize Councilmember Rao, who I just see has raised his hand, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm having some issues with my chat. I cannot find the chat window on my machine. So I apologize for keep raising my hand. I don't know where it is.
I will look for your hand in the future.
I'm sorry.
Ask your question. That's fine.
Okay. So I just wanted to, to go back to the 36.9, 36 points, I think 9% of above where we could be, where we need to be for reserves. So does that vote? And thank you for an excellent report. So it seems as if we continue during this pandemic and we forecast potential additional revenue loss, like most cities are facing in towns in the state, we would have enough to continue to fund things out of the fund balance if we needed, right? I mean, in terms of just, is it hard to predict, you know, based on just what we're going through now with sales tax revenue declines, business, you know, permits seem to be up, but based on presentations from staff yesterday, but I just was curious in terms of just, you know, as we look at the next year, as we're in the middle of this pandemic.
So the largest revenue source for the general fund is going to be your property taxes. So you've, you've levied those and they'll be paid and earned, I believe it's at the first of the 2021. So that would be your first indication. You'll have that in January of, of how those collections went and how it affects your revenue for the year. You're, you're already collecting sales tax so far for the year and have some indications from that. I don't know Nancy, if you had anything else to add?
Well, period, quarter three will really be our indication right now. We're just seeing, we're seeing a significant pickup in the ad valorem taxes, because a lot of, a lot of our folks have their taxes paid through their mortgage companies. So Wake County does our tax collection for us. So we're seeing a pickup in ad valorem taxes and that will continue through, into, starting in November through December. And then as of January 6th, they're considered delinquent at that, at that time. But, so we'll have a much better picture come January as far as what, what that revenue stream looks like. Sales tax seems to be staying pretty steady. We just got our sales tax in at the 15th of the month and that was right, right about at what we had projected. So it's really hard to say, you know, the, the, one of the things with COVID-19, it really has, you know, a lot more economic uncertainty than we've had in the past. And so that, you know, certainly could have a negative impact on the town's revenues and operations, but we are watching and monitoring that very closely. And, and again, we don't know how long we'll be in this pandemic, but, but our budget was very conservative for a reason. And I, and I've, so far we, we're, we're staying on target, but again, we will keep a close watch.
Thank you very much. Very good report.
As I said, thank you from all of our council and staff for that. I have a question from Councilmember Fender, please.
Yes. I had a question on something that you just said Nancy. You said that the sales tax that just came in on the 15th was at what you projected. So was that a new production based on COVID or pre-COVID?
That's based on COVID. And so, yeah, so it is, it's lower than what we have had in years past, but it's a little bit higher than, than what we had for, for, for an annualized projection. So it's, it's so far, so far so good. But again, we're, we're keeping a close watch.
So how much was it lower than this time last year?
I'm sorry, I don't have those numbers readily available. I don't want to, I don't want to give you information that's not correct, but I'd be glad to, to get that to you.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I had.
Any other questions from council members? I recommend, recognize Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Yeah. Nancy, I understand that you don't have the exact amount and I certainly appreciate why, but do you have any, do you have a feel whether that number is tracking projections that you made? So in other words, I know that we're kind of in a good place now, but are you, are we on track to keep, to keep that projection accuracy?
Again, we're, that's something that we will, we will be monitoring. One of the things we're, we're working on right now is to close out fiscal year 20 and be able to open up and roll everything forward to fiscal year 21. At that point, we'll be able to provide you with a first quarter report that will show you how we're doing for, for July through September. So I'll have more information that I can share with you. Probably within the next couple of weeks, we'll have that information readily available and we can, and I can include some highlights when I, when, when we share that information that kind of shows you how things are trending.
Yes. Thank you Nancy for mentioning the financial report for the first quarter. So staff does monitor this and we are paying much more attention to it at this point. Sales tax is behaving probably as we anticipated. And yes, it was a conservative projection on purpose to put us in, in better shape. So we'll bring more information back once Nancy and her crew get past this CAFR and audit report now. They're capable of focusing their attention and producing that first quarter report that will give you some of the answers to your questions, Councilmember Fender and Councilmember Rabadi. In addition, Nancy is going to be bringing back also November 10th. That would be very important information is her fund balance analysis that will show you really, you know, how did we get to where we are today at the end of an audit? What were the contributing factors? And those are really important things to understand as you, as you look at that 36.9% and understand what does that mean in terms of the value of that percentage and what it was based on and, and the factors that, that created the, the increase. All right.
Thank you, Jeannie. I was gonna, I appreciate the plug. That was one of the things I was going to mention that stay tuned. There's more to come.
And that was Jeannie Hooks, our Assistant to the Town Manager, also Budget Director. Any other questions from the council? Okay. Once again, thank you very much to the whole team. Great presentation. And looking forward to having a great year. Thanks to all your hard work.
Thank you.
Now we're moving on to item seven B as in Bravo. Brandon Zudema, Assistant Town Manager, will present a Town Center Draft RFP. Mr. Zudema.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. We again have Eric Thomas with D F I with us as well for the majority of the formal presentation. Just as a little bit of background and refresher, we discussed this at length at the January work session in terms of the development project and this Town Center project as a whole. And then we have, we came back to you September 22nd. And at that meeting, you received updated information on the pro forma, what the financials were anticipated to look like, also some COVID information and what impact, if any, there was in that regard. And then a discussion of the development or the demonstration project for phase one, which is what this RFP is about. After the 22nd, then we had one-on-one, or I guess one-on-two meetings, Eric and myself, with each of the seven council members individually, just recognizing there's a lot of information here and that we wanted to make sure that we were answering all the questions that might be out there. So we spent about an hour with each council member. Again, really focused primarily around the overall vision for the Town Center and the development project, demonstration project, around the concept of the need for flexibility and around the emphasis on the financials and understanding where the pro forma was coming from, the D F I was providing. So tonight, first and foremost, we are not asking you for a decision or any action tonight. This is an opportunity just to discuss and review the draft RFP. You received that in your agenda packet and Eric will go through the highlights of that tonight. We are happy to take any questions you may have. And then once we get through that process, we will circle back around and have a discussion about potentially bringing this back at a future meeting, ideally November 10th. But we'll take guidance with the possibility of a, an action to release the RFP. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Eric Thomas with UNC School Government D F I. Let him work through his, his information and then we're happy to take questions, Mayor, if that's all right. Eric.
Hi. Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Great, great. All right. I am going to, I have a brief presentation PowerPoint that I'm going to prepare, that I'm going to walk through tonight. Brandon did a great job introducing. I want to make sure that you all can see my screen. Let me know if you can.
Eric, I've shared, I've allowed you access so you can scroll.
Okay.
If you have trouble, let me know and I can move the screens for you.
Brandon, we're on the RFP here. I was thinking we were going to walk through the PowerPoint document.
Yeah, Jeannie, there should be a PowerPoint presentation.
So not this document?
No.
The PowerPoint is essentially a summary of this document here. It's a different link within the agenda. Yeah, there we go.
Is that it?
All right. Here we go.
All right, Eric.
All right. Thank you all. Well, as Brandon mentioned, we've had some great conversations with each of the council members discussing the Town Center Core, the solicitation document that would go out in a couple of weeks, as long as with your endorsement for the first phase of the Town Center Core. I'm sorry, there might be some background noise. I have a, a baby in the room next to us. I apologize if that comes through tonight. So let's see here.
You don't have to apologize for having a baby.
All right. And just for the noise that will come through potentially. So again, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to walk through the meeting goals, what we hope to get out of this meeting tonight, the solicitation process overview. So those that have been around for several years, you know kind of what to expect with the solicitation process, but I want to walk through essentially that process with you all, a review that demonstration project. So phase one, what does that encompass? What are we talking about when we go out to solicitation with private developers? The solicitation consideration. So what's involved again with that solicitation process? And then having a discussion with you all, are we ready to move forward? Is, do we need to answer any more questions? So that's what we're going to walk through tonight. So as I mentioned, the big items to really discuss at the end, the outcome that we want, our endorsement, the key components to be included within the demonstration project solicitation of development partners and S T P. So we want to talk really endorsement of the development partnership strategy, the proposed evaluation criteria, and then the proposed timeline for the release and the review of this document. So how much time are we going to give to developers to respond? And then how essentially do you want to evaluate those and how do you want to review them and get it back in front of you all? As Brandon mentioned, we had the, the two-on-one meetings, Brandon and myself, having just sort of frank conversations with you all, council, to talk really about the overall vision and talk really about the partnership structure. So what we heard from those meetings was overall, there was affirmation of the Town Center Core vision concept. That's great. There was generally, Town Council acknowledged that there is going to be need for additional public investment for the first phase to be developed and what those potential financial impacts to the town may be. But again, the reason for going out to solicitation is to allow developers to propose their responses. And then again, general counsel, the council agreed to move forward to review the draft solicitation document. So you all got to that point. You wanted to see more information. And so just high level, why do we do this solicitation for development partners? Why are we structuring the public-private partnership? One is the town has a statutory authority to convey property through multiple different statutory authorities, one for public-private partnerships, one for economic development, or one for downtown development projects. But the real reason for doing this is to allow developers, multiple developers to come in and provide their responses so that you can essentially evaluate and compare apples to apples developers' responses for realizing your Town Center Core. So you can evaluate the experience of the developers, the financial capacity to execute on the project in a timely manner, the design plan and program, the development team and those partners that may be involved in the development team. And then a big one here is the overall public investment strategy. So we all kind of have realized that there could, there's going to be a need for. be a need for public investment to realize this first phase of the Town Center Core, but let's be able to compare how developers respond within a Solicitation Document. So that's why Solicitation is a really nice tool to use to evaluate developers. You have, you have the full Draft RFP as part of the package, but what I just wanted to walk through here is a few of those components, really those highlights that are involved in developing that Solicitation. So we want to make sure to provide the executive summary of the opportunity, the market overview, site overview, really giving those details of what the site has, has really the size and those characteristics, the pre-development process, the development program that's been evaluated as a preferred program for the site, public participation commitments, which we've talked about in, in previous meetings, DFI role, what is DFI's role been involved in this whole, the Town Center Core process? And the big ones for the developers are really the submission requirements, the evaluation criteria, and then the timeline for submission, and then disclosures. To give an overview, we've talked about this at the previous council meeting and also in our one-on-one sessions with each of you council members. But the overall program that's been evaluated for the first phase of the Town Center Core is a mix of residential uses, again, 201 residential, multifamily units, 15 townhomes along Jeremiah Street, two blocks of ground floor retail space, approximately 28,000 square feet of ground floor retail space, and Block 2, two levels of upper story office space, around 32,000 square feet of space, structured parking in Block 1 of 300 spaces, and then a mix of surface parking in Block 1 and Block 2, right about 107 spaces there. And then the site overall, about six acres. We're looking at a total investment estimate, it's about $49 million, and then a developer acquisition of the land from the town. We've modeled in $330,000 per acre, but as part of the Solicitation Process, allowing developers to propose an acquisition price from you all, the town. Let me think, I skipped ahead. There we are. Just to review again, the potential public financial impact in this scenario. Again, this is one scenario modeled that aligns with the public interests stated to date. The sale of the land under the private development pads to the private developer, approximately $1.3 million in that scenario. The incremental real estate tax generated from this project, about $175,000 annually. In this scenario, in this public-private partnership structure, where the town would build and own the parking deck and then lease spaces to the private developer, would generate $221,000 annually. The debt service for the public amenities, which are the roads, sidewalks, and the parking facility, is between $675,000 and $750,000 annually. You got to operate those parking facilities. We estimate that at $120,000 annually. So the net annual impact in this scenario is between $400,000 and $475,000 to the town. And so we want to kind of keep walking through what the document entails. And so as part of the document, the Solicitation Document, it includes the Town Center Guiding Public Interests. And this is a set of public interests that the Town Council has endorsed in the past and as would be sort of a, a key component of the Solicitation to guide those developers and be essentially a measuring stick for how well they respond as part of the Solicitation Document. And so I'm going to walk through them. The development of the Town Center should, one, integrate higher density residential, office, retail, and civic facilities to create a vibrant, walkable Town Center. Two, create a mix of uses for Town Center that complements the existing quality of life and character of the town. Three, leverage the recent and planned public investments to attract private development. Four, preserve Morrisville's historic crossroads architecture in small-town feel. Five, link existing communities with Town Center via greenways, trails, sidewalks, and parks. And then six, establish recreation and open spaces for community gatherings, cultural events, and the town's farmer's market. So these were established a long time ago as part of the, the Town Center Core Process to understand what you all wanted to achieve with the Town Center Core. And these would be listed within the Solicitation Document. And so as part of the Solicitation Document, it's, it's most helpful when it's clearly stated what the town would like to achieve with the Town Center Core Project. And so we've talked a lot in the past about providing flexibility to the developer, so ensuring that there's flexibility built into that the development teams don't feel too constrained in responses and that we don't limit potential development responses. So what we want to do is make sure that they understand where their requirements are, but where there's flexibility from the town. So as part of the Solicitation Process and site design considerations, the requirements are, one, to accommodate libraries' parking needs. If the developer feels that they need to take over some of the surface parking spaces that the, the library has built, they need to accommodate those libraries' parking needs elsewhere in the overall development plan. And then two, would be to locate commercial corridor along Carolina Street. So establish that retail heart of the future Town Center Core of Morrisville. Those are requirements. As part of site design considerations, the preferences, that is townhomes along Jeremiah Street on Block 2. And then where there's flexibility in the plan is, one, increase and decrease in density and the location of structured parking. So there is some flexibility built in to where that parking could be located. Obviously, it needs to support the overall program. My daughter just walked in the room and told me she's home. That's how it goes. And so the public-private partnership, how we want to structure this and how we laid it out within the Solicitation and how we thought about the overall Town Center Core development is, hey, the town owns approximately 15 acres right now. The town would sell the land under the private development pads to the private developer. So that would be town selling the land. The infrastructure, town would build the infrastructure, the roads and the sidewalks, and that the town would build that in conjunction with the private developer. So you wouldn't have to necessarily take the risk of building it upfront, but it would be in parallel, in coordination with private developer. And this would allow the private developer to have input in the road design. They'll have some great ideas with how best to lay out roads and sidewalks to support the retail. That's part of their development plan. And then also the infrastructure, the town would participate in the parking infrastructure. And then other, and this is one that we've, we've been talking about for several years, the part of the original RFP was, the town could also, as part of a public-private partnership, lease space and lease a portion of the commercial space from the developer for town needs. So the town needs are undefined right now, but if there is a desire for 10 more town space for town uses, community gatherings, there is the ability for the town to potentially lease space from the private developer for those, those needs. I see there's a question. I'll pause here because there is a question.
Nice, Councilmember Robi.
Actually, I have two questions. The, if you go back to the previous slide about the library parking, I heard you just say that the, the developer might co-op the spaces that are already, that the library is already using as parking lot, if they need to, that they would accommodate libraries' parking needs. That's kind of loose to me, like, should they put anything in there about they have to accommodate it with proximate, I mean, they can't just, I mean, if they take this from the library, where are they going to put them?
Then that's part of the, the overall document lays out where the library's parking spaces that they're not going to touch are located, but that if they do, if they do identify the desire to essentially build on some of the other surface lots of the library, the surface parking spaces of the library, those spaces need to be accounted for within the development program. So that, that is laid out within the Solicitation Document, a detailed drawing of the, the library and their parking spaces that they currently have, and that the developer within their response needs to accommodate the libraries, those parking spaces that the library requires as part of their use, needs to accommodate those within the overall plan of, of the, this first phase.
Okay. And in the full document, did you put some, any limits on the increase in density?
We haven't put any limits with, on the overall density that, you know, there's, you know, the, the density is going to be essentially driven by the ability to park the concept. So one is, you know, we're, we're putting out a program that is a, a vision and a program that essentially would be endorsed by you all, council. Perhaps a developer is able to accommodate a few more units in a, in a way that doesn't overall impact the need for more parking, a lot more parking within the Town Center Core. What we're trying to give them is, within the Solicitation Document, essentially a, a plan that is well thought through and that is endorsed by you all, the council. Now, too much deviation from it would be maybe not well received from you all, is how I'm going to communicate that to private, the developers when I do outreach. And so, yeah, we want to make sure that there's some, we want to obviously provide some flexibility, but too much density would obviously not be well received from you all, the council, and based on what may be the, the parking demand that would be generated from that and overall land use and just the, the sort of vision document that we're sharing. So we want to provide some flexibility, but I don't see developers coming in responding by putting, bringing in towers to this area. Does that answer?
It does. Would, would the redirection of Carolina, is that going to happen as part of this Phase 1? Because I know that we have to redirect it a little bit, but I thought, for some reason, I thought it was a little further down. So...
The realignment of Carolina Street?
Yeah.
So what we've identified within the first phase of infrastructure that is essentially designed to support the, the overall development. Carolina Street is built out, past the, the roundabout to this point, to connect with Foxglove Drive. Now, currently, Carolina Street goes, you know, this following my cursor here, that is the two-link Carolina Street in its current alignment. So the proposed realignment of Carolina Street for this Phase 1 comes up here and then a new road would essentially come up to connect to Foxglove here, to essentially create two development blocks. So that is sort of what is included within Phase 1, those costs there of, of that road.
And aren't those white boxes, aren't they houses that currently need to connect to Carolina Street? Like, what are the, what are those? Aren't...
Yes, those are. And so this plan doesn't demolish those homes or relocate those homes. Those, the Carolina Street can still exist. The current Carolina Street, it can exist in this proposed concept. So...
I thought we were replacing it. I guess not.
In this concept here, the road is realigned to essentially create the, these development pads. Now, this road, the current Carolina Street alignment is not, there's no demolition cost associated with that within this. Now, future phases, and that's where the future overall vision for the Town Center has these homes along Carolina Street not being in place. It's the town green, it's other development, future development of the, the Town Center, you know, future phases, where then it's more of this orthogonal grid to support those future phases. Now, when that happens, a future phase, but both these roads can exist within the sort of first phase and to support this project.
Did you have anything else, Councilmember Robi?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I didn't.
Okay. Continue, Eric, please.
And so as, as part of the, the document, the Solicitation, there's a, an element of it of what's going on with the future phases of the Town Center Core. So as we kind of just discussed, Town Center is not just one development phase, it's multiple phases over time. And so a developer that, as part of the document, there is language that would allow the developer to propose terms for options to purchase and develop future phases of the Town Center Core. So a developer that comes in and builds Phase 1, and is the developer selected to do Phase 1, they would want to know what's happening in Phase 2, Phase 3, Phase 4, and would most likely be interested in being the developer selected to do those future phases. So as part of the Solicitation Document, this would allow developers to propose those terms for options for future phases as well. Now, developers may not say that they want to do that, but it just provides that ability. It's a way to mitigate risk for the developer, knowing that they have the ability to execute on the full vision of the plan moving forward. And as part of this sort of future phasing of the Town Center Core, we lay out the vision for the Town Center Core within the document, within the Solicitation, but also state the town's commitments to the Town Center Core Vision and realizing the full vision, which is town green, additional road infrastructure, et cetera. So there are future public investments to support the future phases. So open space, road infrastructure, sidewalks, and a lot of it's to be determined, but we want to state at least a commitment of the town to these future phases as a way to, one, show the development community the confidence in moving the, the rest of the phases forward. Sorry, it's a little slow here. Make sure I'm on the right slide. So what we ask of this, of the private developers during the posting period, we ask them for a development plan in their responses. This provides program amounts, the units and the square feet, both of that's of the residential, the retail, the office space, the expected rents of all these components, the timing of phases. So are they planning on doing this all in one phase, the six acres, or do they have it sort of built out, staggered over multiple phases? A labeled site plan with the building massing. So to understand the densities, we ask them to provide those site plans and also the massing studies so that you understand exactly how tall are they planning on going in certain blocks? The acquisition price for the land, as I mentioned, that will, we allow the developers to provide that acquisition price that they are willing to pay for the land. And then the proposed amount and structure of town participation in the project. So again, this is the one where they talk about, okay, the town can participate in the project this way, and here's how we expect the town to participate. And so we're asking developers to do a lot of due diligence and a lot of pro forma modeling in order to get to a structure of a deal that they feel makes sense for them. And ultimately, the reason we do this as part of the Solicitation Process is so that if when we get the responses back at the end of this period, we can compare how developers, what their asks are, and do a thoughtful comparison over each developer to see how they envision the public participation in this phase of the project. We also ask developers to provide their financing details. So what, what sources of debt and equity are they planning for the project? Required investor hurdle rates. So we ask, what is the hurdle rate that you all as a development team need to achieve to satisfy your investors? This is one that's really important. Some developers may be really eager to get into the Morrisville market and have a lower rate of return than some other developers that may have higher rates of return. And so this is a good comparison over what the public participation ask may be, is what their investor rate of return will be for a project. We ask them for the earnest money deposit, what they propose, as essentially the development team selected, what their deposit would look like. We ask that development team to identify their partner firms and those roles. And then we also ask for relevant experience and financial capacity. So a big one is, have you done this before? We want to see that you have the ability to execute on this plan. This is a complicated development project. So can you do it? Have you done it? Give us those references so that we can call those communities that you've worked in to see how well you've built your projects that you've talked about and that you've listed. And so that's a really important part of our due diligence upon response, upon receival of the, the responses, is let's see how well the relationships are between the community and those developers after they've completed projects. Make sure that the relationships are still solid, and that's a good sign that relationship would be good, would be solid moving this project forward also. And then again, financial capacity. We want to understand the financial capacity of the development team to pull this project off. We're, we're estimating right now how drawn up, about $50 million project. So we want to see that this development team can execute on that vision. As part of the Solicitation, once the Solicitation goes live, that you all endorse it, that's when DFI, we do, our really, our really heavy lifting starts. I know Brandon has fielded some responses from developers that are interested in this project. I had a call this morning with a developer that was interested in this project. So what we do, DFI, is we do our developer outreach. We have a database and a rolodex of developers across the region that are, have done mixed-use developments, some in Morrisville, some in Charlotte, some in Atlanta. And we, we reach out to as many developers as possible in order to pitch this project to them. out to as many developers as possible in order to pitch this project to them, to gauge interest, and to also see if they're willing and interested in responding. DFI will do site visits with these interested developers, walk the site. A lot of developers like to see the land and sort of see what's going on in order to develop their concepts and their responses. But typically, what we do a lot of is this response of questions from the development community. So, we'll send out the solicitation document, and I will field a ton of questions about, okay, is it, when's the town green phase being planned, or is there flexibility in the overall density of the development? You know, just all sorts of questions regarding the solicitation and really talking about my relationship that I build with you all and what you all expect as a council. And during that 90-day solicitation period, the development groups, those that are interested, they develop their teams, their architects, their general contractors, their, if it's a master development, their sub-developers that essentially will specialize in each of the individual program uses, and they put together their materials for the response. And then, what I am building into overall timeline is, more than midway through the response period, I will get back in front of you all, the council, to provide you updates on what I'm hearing from the developers that I'm talking to regarding the solicitation, just to let you all know if there's, you know, just what I'm hearing. So, it's really just a checking point with you all to talk about what I'm hearing from the private development community regarding the solicitation. And so, after the responses come in, what the process looks like is, town staff establishes a review committee. DFI and the town staff, we review the proposal simultaneously, so we dive deep into each of the responses. DFI will set up essentially a rubric or a matrix to evaluate those responses so that we can set up a side-by-side-by-side comparison of responses, and that there's a ranking of top proposals, or at least just a comparison of those top proposals, so you can see how they stack up individually. And so then, there's a selection process, so how do you all go about selecting a preferred development partner? The town staff review committee would provide a summary of the proposals. The town staff would provide a recommendation to council a preferred development proposal, and then town staff could select that development team to begin negotiations, and then town would start negotiations with that selected development team. You may want to bring in two firms for interviews as part of this process, maybe one stands out as just the best. So, there's flexibility overall in how the firm and the development team is selected, but that's essentially town staff bringing you the summary of the responses and then providing recommendation and then allowing you, the council, to make that selection for who to begin negotiations with. And so, looking at a timeline here, we are right here, it is October 27th meeting, the solicitation framework, we've put together that draft document, there's opportunity to provide feedback and sort of some language clarification if you all desire within that. Right now, we've identified the November 10th meeting as when you all would endorse the solicitation document if you feel it's ready. Here is essentially a 90-day period, taking into consideration there is a holiday in the middle of that, we want to make sure that we bake that into the overall period of time for developers, about a six-week review period, so that would be coming back, looks around April 2021 with the comparison of all the development responses. And so, I wanted to open up for a discussion at this point for questions, but really, hopefully you all, council, you can endorse the sort of key components included with this solicitation, which is the development partnership strategy, the proposed evaluation criteria responses, the proposed timeline of opening the solicitation, closing it, reviewing, getting that information back in front of you, and then what those next steps will be, again, we have that draft solicitation that you all have, we'll finalize it and get it back to you all for endorsement next meeting if you all are willing to do that. So, I'll pause here and let you all ask any questions that you have regarding that, the solicitation document.
Looking in the chat, or for the raised hands, to see if anyone wants to chime in? I recognize Councilmember Garamello, please.
Hey, Eric. I read through this whole package, and I have a lot of questions, and I will, I have written down in a sticky pad here, and I'll start with it. I think in our discussion, I had great concerns about the cost of how much we are selling it for at 330 an acre, because my main issue is, we are giving them a pad-ready, you know, a pad-ready, you know, right now, we just bought the land for the fire station two, it's almost equal into the same, which is, doesn't have anything that we are doing. So, I want to ensure our town is protected and we are getting our fair share back. So, that's my number one. And the second is the parking deck formula. I still have questions, but I will just pass for now. And my, the other questions are the infrastructure. Like, for any developer who comes in, why, they pay their fair share of any development in front of their property? I understand the overall infrastructure that we are paying for it, why are we giving that a slack to these, you know, in the downtown project? It should be, they pay their fair share in front of their property. We understand the overall infrastructure, we are paying for it, like, but it is very fair to pay their fair share of their, where they're doing their development. Then, the other question I have is the stormwater. We are, we build excellent stormwater, but, and I understand it is away and we are trying to accommodate the downtown, why are they not paying their fair share of stormwater? In that proposal, we are saying that they are going to, we are going to provide the infrastructure, roads, and stormwater. You know, you asked me, you gave examples last time, you, you know, you used Cary, I did a little bit of research, they are making the developers pay for their stormwater as part of it. So, I, I don't want to do this research, but I want to ensure the town, and you especially, the DFI, is doing and looking out for us. Then, the other thing I have is, we are saying the town will partner basically for public infrastructure. It's not very clear, it's one parking deck or the two parking deck, because we initially are bidding for the first one, and then you're leaving it open-ended if the second one, the town is also going to build it, because you have put one slide where we had to pay for the town green and other areas. Then, the other, then, the question then for me, it comes is, we give the RFP for 90 days, and then we come back, we pick someone, are we, as a council, ready to commit, you know? Then what's the next step? You know, the guys will come and say, build a parking deck, it's $10 million. So, as a town, are we ready for that? Because, once we release the RFP, everything goes very quickly after that, it's just a sequential form of it. And I looked at Town of Concord, Town of Kannapolis, and Town of Cary. The common theme of all of those, especially, you know, Town of Concord and Kannapolis, is it was kind of a dying town. You know, they were trying to work on regenerating the downtown feel, and so is Town of Cary. You know, the downtown is, they're completely trying it and make it vibrant. So, for me, I see that, Marcell is not that. Marcell is very, very ahead of the game, every piece of land is top dollars here. So, why are we, you know, soliciting in helping the developers here to just push a downtown? And I ask that question and again and again to myself, because I want, as a council, that we as town have to do our due diligence, that we are not getting short change from the developers. So, those are my things, and I would appreciate if you guys can look into it.
Yeah, I mean, I can respond to a, Satiya, I don't want to take too much time responding to all your questions, but one is why there's the, I mean, why we structured the solicitation the way that it's structured in terms of letting the developers respond and put together an acquisition price proposal to you all is, so that we can compare how developers respond, what they base the value of the land. And again, you've hit on a good point of, hey, this is pad-ready, the infrastructure that you all are proposing, you know, the road infrastructure would be built by the town, so the pad is ready. That's where the developers, in this apples-to-apples comparison, we may say one developer that proposes $500,000 an acre. What we've seen recent land sales within this area for, you know, the land sales are at $330,000 an acre. Now, again, there might be, that's where we're going to allow developers to respond and be able to compare those responses based on what their acquisition price is.
Yeah, yeah, I get that, Eric, but also, like, just keep in mind, my house is just a little less than a quarter acre, and right now, the land value for it is 100,000. Okay, so, I'm just throwing that as a pad-ready, and like, we are, this is like, my house is 15-year or 17-year old house, but this is like, cutting-edge that we are putting all these things. So, if we get three developers, and one says 330, one says 450, and says 550, is that what we go with, or do we know what our real cost is? That's where I want to ensure our town is getting its worth.
Yep. And, I mean, that's, for this process, being able to compare those acquisition prices from the developer, that's, you know, kind of the best we can get from the developers at that point, is trusting them on their dollar figure that they're willing to propose, and then there is negotiations there. And so, what you all, what they ultimately propose, yeah, one developer may say, hey, I'm willing to go $500,000 per acre for acquisition of this land to develop, and I'm eager, I want to get into the Morrisville market. That's where this solicitation allows for those, you know, the comparison of those responses. And then, there is ultimately, hey, if you like a developer's response, but they didn't offer the highest price, there is the ability to bring in firms to negotiate with and have interviews with of, what do you value it higher? Would you be willing to go higher? So, there is, whatever they respond to isn't the final necessarily figure for what they would acquire the property for, but it gives a pretty good basis of what they feel the land is valued at. Does that...
And yeah, that was just one, so you have other...
Yes. So, the stormwater question, we'll get into the stormwater that you all, the town, have built on the west side of Town Hall Drive to support the Town Center Corps. So, that was essentially part of that public investment in public infrastructure. It was expanding the stormwater pond, which water was running off, essentially would be able to make it attractive or want another attractive component for bringing a developer in to do this project.
Yeah, I am totally fine with town building the stormwater, so why is not the same formula, like, when we are paying for the parking deck and they are paying their fair share, that these builders are not bill, you know, paying for that? That's where I'm coming down to, is like, you know, yes, you know, we have created our public infrastructure, then they, whatever they build, you know, give their fair share of it. And that's what Cary is doing, and it was a tough negotiation, I want to ensure, you know, we get that the same way.
And how we've structured the financial modeling is, how can we put together a package of the financial model, in our estimates for what it costs to develop and what our estimates are for what the market rents will be when this project is developed? And how can we get to a project that is essentially financially feasible for what a, you know, the low end of what that hurdle rate is for that developer to come into the project? Now, if a developer, and that's part of, again, one of those components that part of the solicitation is, if a developer has a lower rate of return expectation for this kind of project, they'd be willing to spend more on those fees, the stormwater fees associated, or pay their fair share for the stormwater fees. So, there is some built-in flexibility with the fee negotiation, and we can identify through the selection process, developers that potentially have those lower rates of expectation return for this project, which then there would be the built-in flexibility to pay more for stormwater fees and for, you know, less parking rates.
And Eric, I want, I totally get that. I'm not here to make the developers more money. I'm here to, as a council, I, my role is to ensure that the Town of Marcell and their citizens are getting a fair deal. So, if, you know, I see that it's a one-sided kind of a story, then I will obviously call it out, and that's what I'm trying to make sure that we are...
Satiya, I do want to clarify that, what we've modeled, the developers are paying their stormwater fees, they're paying their domestic water fees, they're paying their wastewater fees per residential unit, so that's not, there is money coming to town by paying their fees associated with the planning and the review, the permitting for this project. So, that is essentially the pond itself that captures the stormwaters, what the infrastructure to support the project, but the developer, how we built in the pro forma, is paying all those fees.
Okay, I'll take it offline, might be, you can make me understand better.
Okay, thank you for addressing those, Thomas, and I know that you've captured them. I see Assistant Manager Zuduma writing furiously, so capturing all this stuff. Councilmember Skargans Johnson, please, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Thank you, Mayor. I really do appreciate Councilmember Garamello's breakdown of the various costs and considerations for the project, and I also have some concerns that we are providing a really great deal for someone to build our Phase One that is essentially like a Grace Park, and we're not providing enough public benefits to the existing residents. I know that I sound like I've broken record, and the town green is in another phase, but we have to determine if we're going to provide existing residents some benefit to this Phase One, because we don't have site control of the other phases. We, of the other phases, we have some, some pieces of the pie, if you will, but we don't have that confidence at this time that we will be able to expedite the other phases in a rapid succession. And so, I would like to see a little more balance on the public amenities, so that as we build out, the public will continue to support these efforts, and we'll see the value in continuing on with this project. The one concern I do have that, you know, it's maybe not part of the RFP specifically, but as we convert this area from a public-owned land area to a privately-owned land area, how do we manage to continue to influence the character of this area? I'd like to, in the future, see a downtown development authority, if we could do so. That can be discussed at a later time, but that just keeps me thinking that, you know, we will want to have maintenance of this area. The infrastructure with parking seems to be vague in the RFP, so it potentially could be looking at supporting the structured parking in addition to some other retail parking, so it's not really clear, because we don't really have a lot of detail in this RFPs, but we have to be careful about how much public investment we are making when we're not returning the value back to current residents. The future residents are going to really benefit, but I just need to have more of that balance. And also, the last thing I have is that I don't feel that we need to solicit an RFP at this time. I'm still very pandemic-conservative, and we've just approved a design for a fire station, and we have a very big road project ahead of us, so making too many financial commitments is making me a little bit uneasy, and postponing this a few months to see how the pandemic fares is possibly something to help us understand what the future may be like, with the retail especially. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fender?
I have two questions, Eric. One was on a previous slide where you talk about the review and selection process. It says ranking of top proposals. What type of criteria will you be using for that ranking to evaluate? What type of criteria will you be using for that ranking to evaluate?
Yeah, um, well, it's more of a, a, a side by side comparison for what we ask of the developers within the solicitation would be, what are they talking about in terms of acquisition price of land for the, the development pads? What is the proposed amount of structure of town participation in the project? So essentially synthesizing down what their ask may be, um, for the development. It's coming in with their development concept, their, their ability, the time, the timeliness of their, their ability to execute on the plan. So it's more of a side by side comparison, so you can see how all the development responses stack up against each other. And so maybe there's one that's sort of a, by ranking, sort of hitting the checkboxes in terms of, hey, the ability to go quickly, the, the team that has a lot of experience and the financial capacity to do this quickly. They have provided really good references for projects that they've built. And so, um, that's what we're envisioning as part of that ranking of those proposals would be more of that, who's, who's really hit the, the, the mark in terms of the guiding public interest? The potential public investment strategy associated with their response? Their ability to think through the, the potential future phases of the development also. So that's what, um, sort of that side by side comparison of responses, um, as part of that review process from DFI and the town staff.
Okay, good. And then my second question is, can you go to the slide that had the timeline?
Yes, um, yeah.
Um, I thought there was another, there was another slide that I remember it saying, um, 15 to 18 months to begin construction. Yeah, I think it was a bulleted milestone type of schedule.
Uh, there are, there are a couple, um, I don't think in the, the, this presentation itself. Uh, but there are proposed timelines within the, the solicitation document that identify, uh, potential timelines for what the, the sort of proposed timeline of development is, uh, for the first phase.
Okay, that must have been where I was looking at it. So I had a question on that timeline, um. Oh, let me, I want to go back to it.
Yeah.
So, two months, uh, so, um, February, mid February, interested development partners would submit responses. Um, we have two months, council selects the, the development partner. And, um, and then another two months for memorandum of understanding and then four months of development agreement. What is occurring between? Well, and then let me, um, say this, so then even after that, it's still another 15 to 18 months from selection for construction to begin. So what is occurring between the mem- memorandum of understanding and development agreement?
Um, negotiation with, with, uh, with you all, uh, there's going to be that, the MOU essentially is that laying out the, the high level details, um, you know, who's going to part, take care of what? Then that's what essentially this solicitation document is entailing is really those details of, uh, you know, the private developer is going to build the residential, the commercial spaces. But the development agreement, that's where it's going to be hammered out to really, uh, refine specifications of, um, you know, this is the, the heavy lifting of, let's, let's negotiate the final acquisition price. Let's negotiate down to what the lease rate will be final for the, the parking or how many parking spaces essentially are allocated per specific use. So, uh, there's a lot of the sort of fine grained, uh, details there, um, that are going to be worked out during the development agreement and the purchase agreement, uh, phase.
Okay, and then a follow up to that is, um, going off of what, um, uh, Councilmember Scroggins Johnson was concerned, what type of, with financial, our financial situation? I mean, what type of financial outlay are we going to have, um, in the, the next 15 to 18 months? I mean, actually, it's going to be longer than that. I mean, are we gonna, or what is the financial outlay from when we get responses from the development and construct, when construction begins?
So Councilmember Fender, that would be part of the negotiation that would go on that, you know, certainly DFI would help guide us on, but that we would be directly involved in as the town staff. And then I do understand your question is related to sort of the bigger picture, as mentioned by Councilmember Scroggins Johnson, uh, in terms of sort of overall debt capacity and, and, and where does this come from? So Jeannie and the budget staff would ultimately help you with understanding what the options might be in terms of where we would come up with the money to be able to do our additional public investment in the infrastructure. And I think if you looked at it, the slides that up, but I think we talked about looking at, you know, between 675 and 750 a year for essentially if it were a 20 year debt service, but then that's balanced a bit by starting to see, um, some of the other revenues come in in terms of tax rate. Yeah, so there it is, so 675 to 750. Um, so you're looking at 400 to 475 of an annual impact. But keep in mind, you do have that property sale, uh, that would come likely upfront as part of an agreement. So that could also cover potentially as much as maybe around, and again, we're, we're talking rough numbers, so keep that in mind, but potentially, you know, you could cover your first three years of debt payment with that money if you chose to. Um, but I do think that's, it, it is part of a little bit of a bigger conversation.
But when would, based on that timeline that's in the RFP, when would that debt service begin?
So if we are talking about working on an agreement in the spring of 21 and probably not having anything in place until the fall of 21, you would be looking at FY 22 or FY 23, depending on how quickly we reached agreement and how we had to start sort of our side of the infrastructure, which you would assume would probably be, you know, earlier than later in the process.
So it's nearly a year out.
I would say it's, it's probably at least, I think conservatively, it's a year out before we would be seeing any sort of financial commitment minimally.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Robati, please, and then I have a comment, and then, and then Councilmember Row, actually.
Um, so talk about sounding like a broken record. I want to echo Councilmember Garamella's concerns about the parking formula. I, I know that we're not going to solve this here tonight, but I look at this and I really feel that there is just not enough parking. And if the developers are going to use the same formula that you're using, that to me is a huge concern. The other thing is, I, I, for some reason, I thought we were going to finance this development with a bond referendum. Is that not correct? Aren't we doing a bond referendum on the ballot next year?
We are doing a bond referendum next year. We have not necessarily, you have not necessarily made any decisions about what that would be. That, this is certainly a consideration that I would, that you will want to look at along with several other things, uh, that were previously discussed about what could have been, uh, a bond referendum this fall. So we'll have some updates from that, from Jeannie and the budget team. And then you would also make the, your decision on what your priorities would be for that bond referendum, uh, given what our potential capacity is and what you're willing to do in terms of that.
Well, what's the timeline for the discussions on that bond referendum? Because I definitely don't want to get into a situation where we haven't made those decisions and then we start up the whole budget thing that consumes like the whole late spring. So what's our timeline for, for making those decisions? Because I do think that the financing has to be part of a larger conversation. And I think the bond referendum has to be part of that conversation also.
So, uh, Councilmember Robati, so bond referendum discussions will be kicking back up again. We, we, we've had many conversations about what project packages might look like, um, when we were trying to go for, uh, fiscal year 2020. Um, since we're targeting fiscal year 2021, we are going to be picking those conversations back up in, um, November-ish. Uh, I believe I have, um, an item on the rolling calendar for that to talk about, how do we start educating our community on what is a bond referendum, what does it mean to you? And then council, um, from there, I have a timeline to work towards, um, conversations with you about what kind of projects are we considering? Uh, and that would go through retreats and into our budget development process with our CIP. So you're about to engage in, in that, um, activity very, very shortly.
And your timeline, Jeannie, Ms. Hooks, will include the, the extra time that'll be required for public engagement due to the fact that we may not be able to do in-person engagement and all that stuff. Because I, to me, that's, I, I know it seems like we're getting off topic a little bit, but to me, that's a key, that's a key element of this discussion. So I just want to make sure that we're all, that I, that at least my feeling about that is out there.
Yeah, so, so staff is working on really that, that public engagement. And what does that look like in the COVID days and how can we do that effectively? And then from there, we'll move with our budget development process in tandem with CIP. Your conversation will layer in, um, um, bond referendum and prepping for that action that you want to occur in November of 2021, uh, to hold a referendum.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, so, and the only other thing I had was, I, I looked for, but did not see in the larger document, um, an indication that we wanted to preserve as much green space and tree line as possible. Um, is that somewhere and I just missed it or where would that information go?
We do have mentioned, let me look for that while we're talking, but we, we specifically actually just added additional language after talking with each of you in our one on ones. We did add some language about the interest in green space and I'm looking for it now.
Okay, I mean, I trust you. If it's in there, it's in there.
Yeah, we talk, we talk about the town center core vision and the preference for, uh, green infrastructure and sustainability focus in the development.
Green infrastructure and sustainability focus is, that's a little bit different than naturally occurring green space and micro parks and, you know, publicly available micro parks and that sort of thing, which further to Councilmember Scroggins Johnson's point, um, you know, we do need to pack some things in here that'll benefit the people that already live here. Dog park, dog park.
So Councilmember Robati, on page seven of the RFP, it does mention the vision the town council has established is one that blends higher density, mixed use development, public open spaces at different scales for community gatherings, and then complete streets that feature wide sidewalks for retail opportunities and green infrastructure.
Now, but what this, the, the solicitation doesn't include, it doesn't identify a public park as part of phase one here, the demonstration project, and that.
Yeah, and we knew that.
Yeah, okay. But it does allocate wide sidewalk spaces for public gathering, uh, for the, the retail usage. Uh, so there is that, at least with the, the layout of the concept, enough space on the sidewalk for, you know, street trees and green infrastructure and, you know, retail cafe like setting.
Okay. All right. If you think that that's going to be clearly understood as preserve as much green space as possible, I mean, I trust your judgment.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Robati. Uh, Councilmember Rao, please.
Excuse me, um, some of my, some of my points have already been made, but just a couple of thoughts. One thing that I've seen about any successful downtown development is that it has required some type of an investment to generate a future economic return. So I like the $500,000 number that you had of generating annual revenue, Eric, but I feel like one question I had before I get to all my points is whether that's just the initial phase revenue. Because, you know, I would want that, I think our job as a council today is to look at any option on the table that's going to generate significant revenue down the road that we don't have today. Um, and so I think that's one of the reasons why I would be in favor of an RFP because it gives us options to do that, but it is going to require an investment. And I think that Councilmember Garamella brought up a very good point. I think that if, if, if they came back with an RFP, I think we have to be, we, we have to look at it and say, okay, what's a reasonable amount of investment and a realistic amount of investment that we're willing to make and commit? Because if it's not, and, you know, then I think that we, the concern I have is the developer is going to go, well, here, here's what it is. You know, and, and whether it's bond, I think we, we have options on the table. We could do debt financing, we could do bonds. So I think that we shouldn't hold off on an RFP. I think we need to consider it. But any downtown that we look at has been, um, an investment to generate revenue that we don't, that they don't have today. In terms of what we have in Mooresville, I think we lack that central kind of gathering space with arts and a mix of, we have Park West and we have Grace Park, which have done really well for Mooresville. But, and I think any development that we have today that's doing, that's doing better is the ones that are closer to where people live. So the strip malls look like they're struggling more than the places where we have the multi-family development closer to the office and retail. So I think that's the second big picture point I want to make is that it's going to require some density. And I think there's going to be a limit to going to a developer and saying, well, only 50 units or only 100 units. I mean, I've been doing research on the economic impact of apartments and I, I got a document I'm going to send to the council, it's by the National Apartment Association. They have an apartment community estimator. So this document shows that in Raleigh with 250 apartments, they generated 108 million of revenue when you looked at the repair, the property operations, the, the new residents coming in and spending. So Eric, don't you think that that's something we should be looking at as a council? Isn't just the small amount of incremental revenue we're getting now, but down the road, if it was, you know, more units, more offices, things like that? Um, and so I think that, I, I just bring these points up because I think that's the challenge that we face is that there is a concern from, you know, many residents about too much density. Do we have the infrastructure? But I think we can't have a downtown if we're not willing to commit that there's going to be some kind of density preserving the open space and those requirements. And, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of going forward with an RP as long as we know that we can, like Councilmember Garamella said, ask some of these detailed questions and negotiate so we know that we're getting a good deal. But I see it as something that we can do to provide us a unique differentiator that I don't think we have compared to Kerry, compared to Apex. Even Holly Springs has built up a nice downtown. So as we get through the pandemic, I think we have to look at, what are we going to do now to? And I think Mooresville is in a good financial position. We've got debt, we don't want to take too much on, but I think we are in a position where we can do more than just put our toe in the water and then tap out. And we say, okay, we're going to commit to this, we're going to have a vision, and I'll end with this. I think the MAFC is a good example of that. You know, when I go in that fitness center now and I go swim, I'm like amazed that the bond that we put and the investments we made, it took longer than we thought. But what would, what would Mooresville be today if we didn't have that great place that's getting hundreds of visitors a day? Right? But we took a little bit of risk to get there. So I'm willing to take that risk. I just don't know how much until we get an RP back. And those are my thoughts.
Yeah, um, I could just, just a couple of your thoughts.
Yeah. Talk about the economic impact first and then the density, reality of the density in terms of just.
Right, and, and, you know, DFI, our goal is to just provide you information for a, a, a concept plan that you all, that aligns with your public interests, um, to evaluate that, to provide a proposed, you know, potential financial impact to you all, the town, of what a probable deal would most likely be for the first phase of the town center core. We're not endorsing it, you know, we want to make, let you all make the decision on what you want to see within your town center core. Now, this is, you know, your ability to say, yes, we want to move forward with this solicitation or not. Um, and yes, there is some, you know, the, there is some cost associated with building your town center core right. Town Center Core right now. And, you know, those long, this is a, you know, probably should be viewed as a long-term investment strategy to build this out. And, you know, those infrastructure costs are, you know, we're amortizing over 20 years, but the Town Center is going to be here for a long period of time. And it's hard right now to tell what those future impacts and this future costs may be for the Town Center Core. There's, you know, the land use plan document identifying sort of future phases that may be for the Town Center Core. They could be different programs that would are identified within the overall Town Center Core vision. You know, right now, the market rate rents for Morrisville don't justify building at the density, that's sort of the preferred vision for the Town Center Core, and that's why there's that public participation strategy as part of this. Now, maybe in three, four, or five years of time, the market rents within this area of the triangle will continue to grow and will mean that you don't have as much public participation needed to support projects or any at all. That's, it's just hard to tell right now how the development costs are going to sort of mature over time as well as the market rate rents. So it's, it's, it's hard to really sort of formulate and calculate that out, the full impact of building the full Town Center Core. So that's sort of, yeah.
My, my final point, I mean, I think you've answered my question, but the one thing that would be helpful to, I think, I know for me, but probably for my colleagues as well, is, and you've done it in the past, I would be very interested into getting a figure, and I think you've sent us before, of towns of our size, the, the, the initial investment that those towns made, including infrastructure and parking for a downtown. So when I think about, I look at Holly Springs, which is bigger than us, Apex, bigger than us, Fugue is doing something, I think, on their downtown, but they already had a downtown. So I think the second component of that would be examples of places that didn't have a downtown and then created it from scratch. So all the other downtowns I mentioned already had something there. And I think that's also something that we often talk about. We went to Matthews years ago, Liz Johnson and I were on that trip. I think the other, I don't know if Mayor Colley was, can't remember now, Jackie Holken was mayor then. We did a trip to Matthews, and that was a really helpful example. So that would be very helpful if you could get us that information while we're doing this so that we can make decisions based on what we think is reasonable investment. That's my final.
Thank you, Councilmember Rao. So I'm very excited about this. This is a really good RFP as drafted. I think I'm excited to start moving forward with it. Having gone through this process before, this is really setting the table and I'm really looking forward to seeing what the development community brings us back, to see what choices we have to try to create something essentially from scratch, as was just mentioned. Right now, we're, we've got to play the hand that we're dealt. The location that we've chosen for our town center doesn't really support retail that much. So if we want to have retail and other mixed use, we need to have public-private partnerships to make that happen here. If we are willing to just let a developer come in and build as many apartments as they want, I think that they would be able, under that model, to pay for all the infrastructure necessary. But that's not what we're looking for. We're looking to have something better, something that will support our community to address the need for current residents. I think the library makes it a really nice destination. I think having some retail stores along Carolina will meet the needs of our current residents, even though we don't have a park yet. We do have that planned in the future in my one-on-one. Mr. Thomas was very kind enough to say that there looks like there's room for essentially a plaza in front of Block Two's retail. So that would be fronting a road that we will have control of so we can have events there. So that can almost be an urban park right off the bat. So I think that there will be good amenities in this, the first phase of the demonstration project that will support people. In regards to the parking, this has been discussion for councils going way back. To address the parking, I think I'm comfortable going with what the professionals are suggesting for now. If the developer thinks that they can add more parking, all the better. But if we find that this first development project is short on parking, we have three more phases to make up for that need. If we know that we need more parking, we'll have enough parking in that phase and a little bit extra to make up for the lack here. Everything's going to be very walkable within this town center. So I feel very comfortable moving forward with this. I think it's a great start. And the real excitement, it'll be like Christmas when we open up these proposals and we look at the rankings and we decide right next to each other which one's going to work best for Morrisville now and in the future. So those are my comments. I don't really have any questions, but this is a very exciting time. And now I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have mostly comments to make. The only, the only kind of question I had was about the timeline and Councilmember Fender brought that up already, and I think she really hit on what I was, wanted to talk about. But as it relates to that timeline that's in the document, the, the details, the really important details that we're all talking about now will be part of that development agreement phase when we're negotiating with whoever the developer is. So we're going to have this, these kinds of conversations again, and those details will be fleshed out. And I get it, it's really hard, we all want the details because the devil's in the details. But I think it's really important to remember that that, there's more to come. And, and so my, my comments now have more to do with how pleased I am with the flexibility that is built into the document. I, I, as I stated many times, I really want there to be creativity that comes out of this process. I want whoever is going to reply to our requests that they, they feel empowered to be as flexible and as creative, creative as they can be. I think that's going to be, bring a better product in the end. We've all, we've all said some really, really important things tonight. A couple of things I just want to make sure I, I emphasize because I feel very much the same way. When we talk about comparing this project and, and the town of Morrisville's Town Center downtown that doesn't exist, I, I get nervous when we compare ourselves to other towns that have existing town centers that they're trying to revitalize. That's not us. We're starting from scratch. And, and so I would tell you the better comparison, I think it's Councilmember Rao talked about, Holly Springs. Holly Springs really did not have a town center and, and, and built one similar, well, kind of similar to what we're doing. And I will tell you, Holly Springs started years after the town of Morrisville started having these conversations and discussions, and yet they are light years ahead of us today. So I don't want to miss an opportunity. I, I'm really afraid if we keep punting and spinning our wheels, we miss the opportunities that are out there right now. Now, that's not to say, you know, come, come early 2021, when we're looking at proposals that I'm going to love all of them, you know, maybe I'm not going to like any of them either, but I don't want to miss this opportunity to see who's out there and what they'll do for us to, to bring our vision to fruition for our citizens that have been waiting and waiting for this project to get off the ground. And, and I would tell you that, that towns, towns that have existing town centers today that we try to compare ourselves to, if we could go back in time, I, I would bet money, and I am not a betting woman, but I would bet money that back in the day, when those towns were creating their downtowns, those towns invested in the infrastructure that was necessary for their town centers. That, we have already invested a great deal in this project, and I want to begin receiving a return on that investment for our citizens sooner than later. We potentially will need to invest more. We've talked about that, but we have already invested a lot. And for years now, that investment is just sitting here and we are not getting any closer to a return on investment. And so that concerns me. So I, I too am looking forward to moving this forward. I, I am not discounting all the concerns that we all have, and I've not repeated a lot of them that you, because I agree with, with several of the concerns that have come out. But I think that's, those are the concerns that we'll deal with again during this development agreement phase. And, and, and the idea that developers are not going to pay anything, are not going to pay any fees and not going to pay in, I think we need to, we need to clarify that because that's, 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 that's not the case. So, so anyhow, I, I, I'm, I'm excited to, I hope that we move this forward soon. I would, I'm okay with bringing this back in November and, and having another discussion if that's what we all need to do to feel comfortable. But I, I think this is a project our citizens have, have been waiting a long time for. And, and again, I don't want to miss any opportunity that may be out there now for us to move this project forward.
Okay, thank you. We've heard from all the council members, and despite there is some concerns raised about moving forward to the RFP, I think the general consensus is to go ahead and move forward and looking forward to November 10th. Is that staff's assessment of what they've heard as well?
Yes, sir. I, I think what I would summarize is that there are certainly some questions, and I think what might even be described as a couple of concerns, but I do think that the majority of that will be addressed as a part of the development agreement coming together. As Mayor Protem Johnson mentioned, you know, the flexibility that we've provided, and you've heard Eric emphasize that in, in several consecutive meetings, particularly given the lessons that we learned from our first attempt at this, that the flexibility is critical. So you would then have to balance that against some of those questions that you now have and some of those concerns that you now have with the understanding that we're not saying they won't get answered, we're just saying we're not going to answer them in the RFP because I think if we tried to do, well, I know if we tried to do that, we would not be successful in going out. We need the creativity, as mentioned, that we think will come from development proposals. And then again, you have a lot of opportunity to come where you'll be able to help us work out some of those, many of those details as we work through ideally a development agreement with a preferred developer. So having heard that, our intention then would be to, Eric and I will circle back and review the comments that, that we've both been writing down and review those. I think we have one or two questions that we could try to get some information to you ahead of the 10th, and then we will be prepared to bring this RFP to you, and that will be a night that we'll ask you to take action to release the RFP.
Okay, any comments from you, Mr. Thomas?
No, I think Brandon summarized it really well, and, and I apologize if there's any confusion on stormwater fees or other fees associated with, those are, we always bake those into the pro forma, so we're not, we're not doing anything, everything that's been structured here is, is the legal framework for what the town can participate in, that's infrastructure. We're not giving, I've never modeled any grants for giving away fees associated with the project. So just wanted to clarify that, that the, the fees for stormwater, for domestic water, for wastewater, for park space payment and lieu, those are all baked into the pro forma for what a developer would provide to you all, the town, as part of this process. So just wanted to clarify that as part of this process. And then, yeah, I think I have a lot of comments that I'm going to review and, and make sure that everything's addressed as much as possible for next meeting. And, you know, what, what I also want to note is, this is, you know, sort of the, what we learned from lessons from the first negotiation is, hey, let's, let's provide that flexibility so we can get responses that, you know, allow developers to be creative and compete against each other and not try to lay out such a strict program that maybe is unrealistic to a lot of the development community. And that also, DFI, we are here through, with you for the entire negotiation process and comparison process to essentially evaluate and review and ask the questions that a developer would need to answer to give you an informed decision. So that's, I just want to make sure that you all are aware of that will be, there's a, there's a plenty of opportunity to review and ask the tough questions to the developers when they would come on board during the sort of review and, and negotiation process. So just to clarify that, you're not in the left to just kind of handle all those tough questions on your own also. So I hope that alleviates maybe some concerns there. So, yeah, I know, I appreciate all the feedback and, and hope we'll work on getting those, any clear, clarifying elements off to you before next week, before the next meeting.
Okay, that's great. And to the end of the negotiation, I've taken the Development Finance Toolbox course from UNC School of Government. I believe some other council members are doing that in December. If there's any way to give us just a little bit of a taste of that so that we understand the developer's perspective, you keep on talking about hurdle rates and things like that, I'm not sure that we all really understand where the developers are coming from and how they have to meet a certain return, otherwise they're, they're not coming to the table at all. So if we're going to negotiate in good faith, I think we need to have a little bit more education about what it is to be in their shoes, because we know from our end, we're protecting our taxpayers, but they're protecting their investors. So I think that would be helpful moving forward.
Mayor, if I could, real quickly, just one second, if you don't mind, that Development Toolbox is coming up again. I think it's the first week in December. If there are folks that are interested, we will make sure that we send that information out to council.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it. Okay, at this point, that took, that was a great discussion. I'm glad we had that. Our agenda is a little bit later than we expected, so we're looking to get some other items in before our break, but I'm going to go ahead and call for a 10-minute break now. My computer clock says it's 8:07, so I'm going to ask us for a 10-minute break and reconvene at 8:18. So please come back at 8:18, we'll have public comments and our public hearings at that time. Thank you very much. It is 8:18. We're going to bring this meeting back to order at this time, please. We are now at item eight, which is public comment. Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received. Mr. Smith?
There was just one public comment received outside of the submission window discussing the need for traffic calming features throughout the town of Morrisville. All comments that were received will be provided to council in their entirety and entered into the public record.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. We are now at item nine, public hearing. There are three public hearing items on tonight's agenda. A proposed amendment of the land use plan and zoning map for 1001 Airport Boulevard, a proposed amendment of the land use plan and zoning map for 1101 Shiloh Glen Drive, and a proposed amendment of the zoning map for 151 Key Bridge Drive. Council was briefed on these items at the October 13 meeting and will be asked to take action on November 10th. Elliot Ward, Planner Two, will facilitate the first two public hearings. Mr. Ward?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I don't have a whole lot for this first item as far as updates. Council, like you said, was briefed at the October 13 meeting. There were some questions regarding the potential for residential development for the 1001 airport site. So just as a brief update and reminder, residential development is currently permitted in the existing Residential Activity Center District and would also be permitted in the Conditional Business Activity Center District that's being proposed. However, the airport overlay over the site and the surrounding area is not going away and prohibits any residential development. Therefore, the applicant has stated that they do not wish to add any conditional residential restrictions based on redundancy, they feel, with the airport overlay since it is going to continue. That, that's really the only update I had for this item. I'm available, as well as the applicant, for any questions you may have.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing, and then we can do questions after we go ahead and close that. So did we have any public hearing input?
Yes, Sir Mayor Colley, there were two comments received for this item. The first comment is from William Sanderfer, Senior Vice President and Chief Operating Officer of the Raleigh Durham Airport Authority. Dear members of council, please accept this letter as formal objection by the Raleigh Durham Durham Airport Authority to the above referenced land amendment and rezoning. These amendments, if approved, could allow future residential use of the property. The subject property lies approximately one mile from the approach end of our largest commercial runway along the extended runway center line and is subject to frequent arrival and departure over flights at all hours of the day. Allowing a residential use in this area would create an incompatible land use with airport opera. Although we recognize that the existing airport overlay district would currently prohibit a residential use, the town is nearing completion of a new comprehensive land use plan and will consider potential future amendments to the UDO, including changes to the airport overlay district. Any changes to the existing airport overlay district would allow residential uses in areas currently prohibited, in areas currently prohibited and will be opposed by the authority. Since this proposal is one step closer to creating future residential uses in this area, we are compelled by our obligations to the FAA to oppose its approval. The second public hearing comment received is from Mr. Tommy L. Dupree, FAA Manager, Memphis Airport's District Office. This letter is in response to a proposed land use change under consideration by the city of Mooresville, North Carolina. We understand the city of Mooresville has scheduled a public hearing for the LUC October 27, 2020. The proposed LUC is located north of Airport Boulevard and east of the intersection of Slater Road and Copley Parkway, and therefore approximately 1.5 nautical miles from the threshold of runway 5L-23R at RDU. The change is being requested by the developer, Equator Capital Management, for the purpose of amending the current zoning to allow for multifamily development apartments. The Federal Aviation Administration has determined that the proposed LUC would be incompatible with airport operations at RDU. The current zoning by the city of Mooresville to the southwest of RDU is compatible with airport operations, being zoned either industrial, office institutional, institutional, or commercial. The city of Mooresville established compatible zoning adjacent to RDU through adoption of an airport overlay district on May 11, 2016. We understand the RDU Airport Authority has had discussions with officials of the city of Mooresville and Wake County and expressed opposition to the LUC. While the agency recognizes zoning is a state and local issue, we generally support RDU Airport Authority's position. Given the authority's position and Wake County are airport sponsors, this letter is to also reiterate your obligations under your Airport Improvement Program Federal Grant Assurances, specifically Grant Assurance 21 Compatible Land Use, which states, "It will take appropriate action to the extent reasonable, including the adoption of zoning laws to restrict the, the use of land adjacent to or in the immediate vicinity of the airport to activities and purposes compatible with normal airport operations, including landing and taking off of aircraft. In addition, if the project is for noise compatibility program implementation, it will not cause or permit any change in land use within its jurisdiction that will greatly reduce its compatibility with respect to the airport of the noise compatibility program measures upon which federal funds have been expended. We would encourage the RDU Airport Authority to identify the noise impacts of this proposed LUC for the city and county to consider. Development of multifamily housing within the LUC area will likely result in noise complaints from the residents. It is also important to note that future mitigation of noise impacts as a result of this proposed LUC is not eligible under AIP or the Passenger Facility Charge Program. Sincerely, Tommy Dupree, Manager, Memphis Airport's District Office." Both public hearing comments have been provided to council in their entirety and will be entered into the public records.
Okay, thank you very much for that, sir. So before we get to questions of staff and everything, we generally close the public hearing, so I entertain a motion to close the public hearing, and that will be as of midnight tomorrow, October 28th, because of the virtual nature. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protam Johnson.
I'll make a motion to close this public hearing on October 28th at midnight.
Motion, can I hear a second? Like to recognize Councilmember Rao.
I just want to clarify one point with Elliot and the staff for the public, but regarding the rezoning, because I feel like-
Yeah, we're, we're going to do that after we close the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Would you like to second that motion?
Oh, I'll second the motion, sorry.
Thank you very much. Town Clerk Smith, if you could do a roll call vote to close the public hearing, please, as of midnight, October 28th.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing as of midnight, October 28th passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We have a couple of questions queued up, but if Mr. Ward could once again just reiterate the fact that the current airport overlay prohibits residential in the area in question, and the draft land use plan as proposed also prohibits it, so there's some kind of miscommunication going on or lack of understanding. Mr. Ward?
Yes, that's correct. The, the current, current zoning is Residential Activity Center, which does permit residential, however it is prohibited based on the existing airport overlay. That airport overlay is not planned to go away without, has to be decided by council if it, if it were to go away from the site. So with the proposed Conditional Business Activity Center District, that airport overlay will still exist and prohibit any residential development.
Okay, I'd like, like to now recognize Councilmember Robati with a question, and then Councilmember Rao. Ms. Robati?
Yeah, we've looked at a land use plan in which the airport overlay is reduced. Does the business activity, will the residential development in the Business Activity Center still be prohibited under that, if that's adopted?
Yeah, from my understanding, the area being proposed in the new land use plan will not affect this site for the, for the reduction in the airport overlay.
Okay, I have to say, that's, that's not my understanding. Okay, if, if it is, then, then I don't have a problem. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I believe the area in question for the airport overlay is near McCrimmon and not affecting this site. Michelle, see if she'll hand it up.
Yep, so I'll recognize Planning Director Michelle Stegal, and then we'll come back to Councilmember Rao's comment or question, please. Ms. Stegal?
I think Planner Two Ward just indicated exactly what I was going to say, that the airport overlay is proposed to be amended in the area of McCrimmon Boulevard Extension and the TOD East Development Area, not in this area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stegal. Councilmember Rao?
Yeah, I think it's already been mentioned by the mayor, but I, I think, I, I'm just really confused as to why there's a miscommunication when it's been completely made, it's been made completely clear by our staff that as long as there's an airport overlay, there cannot be residential in the site. So there's clearly a disconnect because we're getting emails about this matter. So whatever we can do to rectify that with the airport folks, because I don't think that they're getting the right information, or they're trying to, the other thing that I suspect is that what they're basically trying to do is, I, they may be concerned of if we get rid of the overlay, airport overlay, then there could be apartments. And, and they're trying to get, I think, the applicant to agree to the condition, but he's a businessperson and he's not going to be able to control the future. So I, you know, I think they want this rezoning for economic development, and I don't think it's being very fair, this kind of approach, I don't think is very fair. And so I know we're going to be meeting them on the 10th, but I, that's a separate issue with the land use, the second comment we got. So whatever we can do to rectify that, it's starting to really aggravate me a little bit, and I, I just want to get to the bottom of it, because I'd appreciate the airport leadership knowing about the actual facts of what we're voting on before comments are made like that.
Thank you. I think from no shortage of effort on our, our end to try to keep communications open, and we're looking forward to meeting with them on the 10th before our regular, regularly scheduled meeting. Do any other council members have any questions on this item for Mr. Ward? Okay, hearing none. We look forward to taking action on this on the 10th. You also have the next item, Mr. Ward?
That is correct. So the next item regarding a land use plan and zoning map amendment for 1101 Shiloh Glen Drive, I, I do have a few items to update. Again, the council was briefed on this item on October 13th. There were a few questions, the first of which was regarding a potential job estimate for incoming tenants. There was a letter from the applicant with potential job tenants for the biotech tenant they're, they're kind of pursuing, and that is available in the council's packet. There was also a question regarding noise ordinance. Section 18 of the Code of Ordinances would not prevent any business operation outside of the regular hours, those typical 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM hours, that includes deliveries. The applicant did emphasize at the briefing that the previous use was Sam's Express and, or Sam's Club, excuse me, and they don't anticipate as heavy late night traffic as, as the previous use. And then my final update was regarding, there was a question about the differences between the different definitions of light, medium manufacturing. Those definitions were added to the, the council's packet. I then, I then received an additional question regarding the differences between those and heavy manufacturing. So I'll go ahead and just read the UDO's definition of heavy manufacturing. But I do want to remind the council that heavy manufacturing is included in the first condition from the applicant as prohibited at this site. However, that, that definition is "an establishment engaged in manufacturing or other industrial processing of products primarily from extracted or raw materials or bulk storage and handling of such products and materials, or an industrial establishment having potential to produce noise, dust, glare, odors, or vibration beyond the property line. Heavy manufacturing is distinguished from light and medium manufacturing by its potential for off-site impacts, not necessarily being entirely within an enclosed building, and not being limited in the extent of outdoor storage it involves. This does not include uses constituting a heavy industrial assembly." And that was the definition for heavy manufacturing, and that was my last update for this item.
Okay, with those updates complete, I'd like to open the public hearing. Did we have any public hearing comments on this item? Town Clerk Smith?
No, sir, there were no comments received for this item.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to close this public hearing similar to the last one, that it would close at midnight on October 28th. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protam Johnson.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close this public hearing tomorrow, October 28th at midnight.
Like to recognize Councilmember Robati.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Town Clerk Smith, if you please do a roll call to close this public hearing.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing as of midnight on October 28th passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Does council have any questions for Mr. Ward on this subject? We are scheduled to take action on November 10th. Recognize Councilmember Fender, please. I recognize Councilmember Fender.
Sorry, I thought I had unmuted myself. Can we get the definition of the heavy manufacturing in a, an email or in a document?
Yes, I can add that for the November 10th meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much. Once again, we're looking to take action on that on the 10th. Our next item will be facilitated, facilitated by Planner Two Emily Langston. Ms. Langston?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any updates at this time for the rezoning for 151 Key Bridge Drive. I don't believe there were outstanding questions from the briefing on October 13th, but if there are questions now, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, as before, why don't I go ahead and open up the public hearing? So let's consider that opened. Town Clerk Smith, were there any public hearing comments submitted on this item?
No, sir, there were no public hearing comment.
Okay, as before, would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing as of midnight, October 28th? I recognize Councilmember Robati, please.
I make a motion, excuse me, I make a motion that we close the public hearing at midnight on October 28th on this item.
Thank you, I have a motion. And I'll go ahead and second it. Town Clerk Smith, if you'd like to go ahead and do a roll call vote on that end, please.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
The motion to close the public hearing as of midnight, October 28th passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. I recognize Councilmember Robati, please.
I wonder if we could, for the purposes just of these virtual meetings, if it wouldn't save us time and some hemming and hawing to designate somebody in the beginning of the meeting to make the motions into second? I don't know if that violates some kind of rule, but if it doesn't, it might speed things along.
Okay, thank you for that. I have one comment about this item, and it's really, it's getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, but I would like to do whatever we can from the staff perspective when this project continues to move forward to keep the access for Key Bridge Drive all the way to Cedar Court Community Park, that Greenway path. We've had some instances where we lose access to a path when construction's happening. So anything that we could do that's not prohibitively expensive or not viable would be great now that we have a connection for this neighborhood, I'd like to be able to retain it throughout the work if possible. Does anyone on the council have any other questions or comments for Ms. Langston on this item? Okay. Seeing none, we will continue to move on. We are now at item 10, new items. There are two new items, and thank you, Ms. Langston and Mr. Ward, for those presentations, we appreciate it. There are two new items on tonight's agenda. Consideration of text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to a comprehensive update of the sign regulations and a resolution appointing advisory board and committee members. Michelle Stegal, Planning Director, will present the first item. Ms. Stegal?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. As a reminder, this item has to do with a comprehensive update of the sign code that-
that the town began a while back, went through some starts and stops, but be, are happy to be bringing the draft code before you this evening. Consultant Greg Jones with Ansel Glink has been working on this update for the town and he will be presenting the proposed draft code to you this evening and walking you through it section by section. Just as a reminder, the update is being undertaken in order to bring the sign code in line with the Supreme Court decision in Reed v. Town of Gilbert, which requires that our sign regulations are content neutral. This item, once again, will provide an overview tonight. Public hearing is scheduled for November 10th and potential action on November 24th. But with that, I would like to hand it over to Attorney Jones.
Thanks, Michelle. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. Excited to be here again tonight to discuss the proposed sign code updates. And want to thank the mayor and the council for having me yet again. We've got a decent amount of material to get through tonight, so I'm going to jump right into it. Tweet, Michelle, or I'm not sure who's controlling the slides. If we can move to the next slide, that'd be great. Great, thanks. So tonight we'll provide a quick refresher on where the project stands, recap the town's outreach efforts, and summarize some feedback we've received so far. But the bulk of our time is going to be dedicated to a section by section review of the changes to the sign regulations. I'd like tonight's conversation to be, you know, involve as much back and forth as the, the council finds beneficial. I'm going to provide an opportunity for Councilmember feedback after each section. So please don't hesitate to interrupt me if you have any questions. And then we'll also have time for questions at the end of the presentation as well. Next slide, please. So here's a quick overview of the steps that we've taken to date. As Michelle stated, this has been an ongoing effort. We started back in 2017. We've had several touch points with the town council since then, most recently a couple of weeks ago, for a quick refresher on where things stand. We presented the key issues report, which is kind of the central document to this update. I think it's included in tonight's packet as well. That was presented to the town council back in late 2017. And the proposed code changes that we're discussing tonight, it really flow from that key issues report as well as the feedback we've received from stakeholders, the Planning and Zoning Board and the Town Council as well. Next slide, please. So like any code update effort, it's important to engage and solicit feedback from stakeholders. And the town has used a variety of different ways to engage the public, including in-person interviews, soliciting feedback by email, using the town's website, social media feeds, and the town's regular publications like Next Week and Morrisville. The town targeted folks that are most directly impacted by the sign code on a regular basis. Now, many residents don't have a chance to meaningfully interact with the sign code, and some residents likely don't even know that the town has a sign. So we tried to tailor our outreach efforts to the folks that have the most engagement with the code because their feedback is typically the most on point. So we identified people that use the code on a regular basis. Those include people that work with staff on a regular basis to get sign permits or negotiate sign regulations when seeking planned development approval, sign companies, stakeholders like those. We collaborated with developers, property managers, realtors, the Chamber, Planning and Zoning Board, council members, and, and other groups as well. And these conversations were really intended to uncover what parts of the sign code was working well, what portions could be improved upon, and what parts of the sign code were frankly broken. And the stakeholder feedback that we received was, was really meaningful. And thankfully, we didn't find all that much that was broken. And by and large, stakeholders thought that the town's regulations were fair and reasonable, and particularly as compared to some other neighboring communities. But we took this feedback to heart and limited, to the extent possible, substantive changes to the regulation. Instead, our effort focused on enhancing user friendliness and ensuring that the sign, or the town's sign code is content neutral. Or in other words, making sure the town's sign regulations don't improperly regulate a sign's message or what the sign says. As the council knows, signs are protected by the First Amendment, and the Supreme Court recently reminded all communities that local sign regulations need to be and so that's, that's been the sign code update's primary goal, is ensuring content neutrality. And in addition to making a legally defensible code, we wanted to, you know, avoid creating a lot of non-conforming signs by, you know, suggesting or proposing a lot of substantive changes to, to the sign code regulations. So the stakeholder feedback that we received so far has indicated that the town's rules were by and large working. Next slide, please. Okay, now that we've covered the background, we're going to shift gears and get into the actual substance of the changes to the code. The town's sign code, like many sign codes, starts with general concepts and gradually gets more focus. And the first section is the purpose section. It is, it is broad. It addresses why the town has a sign code, why the town regulates signs, what legal authority the town relies on to regulate signs, and the general scope of the sign regulations. The purpose section admittedly doesn't get a whole lot of daily use, but it's critically important to have a, a good and solid purpose section if the town ever faces a legal challenge. The purpose statements in this portion of the code will frame the town's actions in a proper legal light. So for instance, this section expressly states that the town is preserving the right to free speech and expression. And these, of course, are core First Amendment, Amendment principles. The section also states that the regulations do not suppress free speech in violation of the state or federal constitution. It establishes that the town has an important and substantial governmental interest in regulating signs, and it equally is important, it explains what that interest is, namely protecting pedestrians, motorists, cyclists, property values, and the public health, safety, and welfare. The current sign code failed to address many of these subjects. In the update, this section was intended to primarily explain why the town is regulating signs, and second, to provide a legislatively approved basis for the town to defend itself in the event that there is a legal challenge to any decision the town makes related to signs. At this point, I'd be happy to entertain any questions the, the council has concerning the purpose section. Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to the next slide, please. Okay, so this next section is a little bit more specific than the code's purpose section. The applicability section addresses what specific signs require a permit, which signs don't, which signs are exempt from the sign code's regulations, and which signs are prohibited in town altogether. The current code addresses these subjects. But the revisions to the code build on that framework, albeit in a way that is content neutral. For example, the current, the current sign code states that, that property owners don't need to come into the town to get a permit to put up a for sale sign on their property. The updated sign code still doesn't require property owners to come in and get a permit for these signs, although the code designates these signs as yard signs instead of for sale signs. The term yard sign is a content neutral designation, unlike the term for sale sign. This is an example of how the, the code, the changes to the code alter the language the town uses to regulate without changing necessarily what signs can be permitted or displayed, or the process that folks need to go through to put a sign up. Other changes to this section include adding language clarifying that conflicts between multiple provisions of the code will be resolved in the favor of the more restrictive regulation. This will help staff address any arguments over which regulations apply, and we know that comes up on a, on a somewhat regular basis. And we've also incorporated the government speech doctrine directly into your code. Notably, the First Amendment, First Amendment protections concerning free speech don't apply when the government is doing the speaking. So having a government speech reference in your code helps the town when it is establishing regulations for traffic control, town-sponsored events, and other similar activities. Finally, this section also updated, included a couple of updates to make sure that your, your code is consistent with general statutes concerning political signage. I am happy to answer any questions that the council has concerning the applicability section. Okay. Hearing none, we'll go on to sign maintenance. Thanks for changing the slide. This is a new section. It's not included in your current code. The sign code doesn't currently provide sign maintenance standards. Instead, the town relies primarily on its property maintenance code to regulate signs that have, you know, fallen on hard times, I guess, for back of, for lack of a better term. But the property maintenance code, unfortunately, it doesn't specifically reference signs, and those regulations typically apply more to buildings and properties, so it can be somewhat of a square peg round hole situation for the code enforcement team when they're trying to make sure that the signs that are displayed are, are in the best possible shape. So taking that feedback to heart, we've added a section that's intended to enhance the town's enforcement capabilities and specifically incorporate maintenance standards for signs. This section designates when a sign is considered to be abandoned. This is a great tool to help bring outdated signs into compliance with current, current requirements. This section also addresses sign finishes, positioning, damage associated with signs that are mounted to buildings. These are typically the wall-mounted signs where they get bolted onto the facade. When they come off, oftentimes you'll see the rectangle or some holes from the bolts. We've added language in here that allows the, the town to enforce aesthetic standards to make sure that, that these walls are restored to their, their original condition. Again, the town is relying on the property maintenance code right now, which isn't a terrible way to do it, but this is just a more precise and focused tool that staff can use to ensure that the town looks its best. Are there any questions about the sign maintenance section? Okay. We will move on to the next slide, please. Okay, so section 5164 in the current code provides regulations governing most permanent sides in town, or I should say 5164 in the revised code rather. Currently, these regulations are scattered, dispersed somewhat throughout the sign code, which makes it difficult for customers to understand what they can put up. It makes it difficult for staff to evaluate sign proposals, and it just hampers, you know, the, the town's push towards a more user-friendly, customer-oriented environment. So to help address some of those concerns, we consolidated all of these standards into a single section, and to the extent possible, organized the regulations in tables, in, again, in an attempt to make this as user-friendly as possible. Now, this section has a lot of content, and it helps to keep in mind when you're looking at this section that the town is not making significant changes to the substantive sign regulations. The town really wanted to avoid creating non-conforming signs as a part of this effort. And we also wanted to acknowledge that our outreach efforts didn't really uncover many complaints about how this section was functioning. So most of the regulations governing the size of signs, where they can be located, and how many signs can be posted on a property remain unchanged. But by and large, these regulations reflect what's currently in the code, although those regulations are dispersed throughout the code and not in a, a, a single easy-to-use place. So instead of changing the substantive regulations, these, the changes to this section focus on making the regulations, the existing regulations, content neutral. So we've eliminated references to signs that specific businesses or uses can put up on their property and replace these use-based designations with a code that relies primarily on zoning. So what does that mean? We have, it's a common concept that you see throughout your code right now. Specific uses are allowed in specific zoning districts. We have indexed the sign regulations to those zoning districts. It doesn't get as specific as use, but if you're located in, in, you know, in a, a commercial district, then you are entitled to a specific type of sign allotment. So replacing these use-based regulations that the, the town currently has with regulations that rely primarily on zoning districts, and incorporating new graphics to help communicate these concepts in a way that's easy to understand is really, again, intended to keep an eye and focus appropriately toward the customer to make sure that their experience with the town when they come in to get a permit or propose a new development, including a planned unit development, which may have, you know, a, a completely different set of sign regulations, is as easy and understandable as, as possible. Aside from those changes, a, a lot of the current code in this section stay the same. The sign types are unchanged, the clearance requirements, so how, how far off the, the sidewalk the sign has to be is the same. The size, location, and dimensions of permissible signs are largely the same. I would be happy to answer any questions the council has concerning these standards.
Mr. Jones, this is TJ. I have a quick question.
Sure.
You say rely on zoning districts. Are we talking about parcel-level zoning or land use plan designation?
So we took the zoning district straight out of your unified development organs. So the PGO, the VLDR, the LDR, the MDR, these zoning districts. I think the land use plan, and Michelle can jump in if I'm wrong here, but I think those are just, those are broader categories. So we're taking it a level closer and using the zoning codes designations in the sign code.
Okay, so Michelle, those would necessarily match the zoning districts to the underlying zoning in all cases?
Not 100% sure. I understand the question, but I'll try my best to answer it, and then if I didn't, just let me know, Mayor. But yes, the proposed code bases sign code allowances on zoning district. It does not deal with land use. So the code that's in place now, you would, you would look in a zoning district and start there, but then there were some subcategories. So if it was an institutional use, it got a certain allowance of signage. If it was an office use, it had another allowance for signage. With the proposed code, we're saying if it's non-residential, it doesn't matter if you're office or institutional. You're non-residential, you get X allowance. Does that answer your question? Mayor, I think you're muted.
Yes, I was, sorry. So like a BAC would be a zoning district, and then the underlying zoning per parcel would be a further way to identify where they would, what kind of signs they could have, et cetera.
So with the proposed code, if you're BAC zoning, the only subcategories that are being proposed is if you're residential, you would get a certain allowance. If you're mixed use, you fall into another category, and then we have a column called all other. So those are the only subcategories, for example, under the BAC.
Okay, now I understand. Thank you for the clarification. Did any of the council members have questions on this section?
Okay. Then we'll move on to the next slide, please. One more, sorry. There we go. Okay, temporary signs is our, our next subject. And, and more than any other section in the current sign code, the town's temporary sign regulations rely on, on content-based designations. So that's obviously something we wanted to fix. The town currently regulates temporary signs based on what the sign says. For example, there are regulations in your sign code currently that address real estate signs, which obviously advertise real estate, home garden produce sale signs, promotional event signs, things of that nature. These are very specific designations that the Supreme Court has indicated are an improper basis to regulate some. So now is a great time to determine a better way to regulate. So the updated code reorients the town's temporary sign regulations, so they focus on content So the updated code reorients the town's temporary sign regulations, so they focus on content-neutral variables, but not the signs message. The updated code regulates sidewalk signs, which are signs located on the sidewalk. Uh, yard signs, signs located in a yard, and fence wrap signs, signs that are affixed to fences. Uh, these sign designations are both content-neutral and legally defensible, and that's, that was kind of our our north star as we were going through this effort. Uh, the updated code also regulates the the same variables that the current code does concerning where these temporary signs can be placed, how long they can be displayed, and how many temporary signs can be located on a property. And uh, we've also incorporated something new into this section, uh, including material standards for what temporary signs can be made of, uh, with an eye towards making sure these signs are are more durable and less susceptible to deterioration in the elements. I'm sure uh, I'm sure the council has has seen uh those cardboard or flimsy uh yard signs that are are put out, and the day after it rains, they are either falling over or have torn, things like that. So uh, with that in mind, we included uh aesthetic standards and material standards to make sure that these temporary signs don't create that effect. Like the updated code's regulations for permanent signs, the code's temporary sign regulations are also based primarily on zoning district and not use. So this is another way the town can give itself a helpful degree of separation from claims that its regulations are are content-based. And we've also added a good number of graphics to the temporary sign section to illustrate these concepts. Uh, one challenge, uh, any community that goes through this exercise faces is that uh, when you use content-based language to describe a sign, like a real estate sign or a for-sale sign, uh, you don't really need uh much explanation beyond that. Everybody knows what a for-sale sign looks like. But if you're calling something a yard sign, uh, it's not as clear as the content-based designation of real estate sign. So uh, we've, we've incorporated graphics and a few other ways to make this a bit more user-friendly to help communicate the concepts that the town is trying to. Be happy to answer any questions that the council has about temporary signs. Okay. Next slide, please. Section five sixteen six uh addresses illuminated signs and electronic signs. Uh, this section is largely unchanged from the current code with one notable change. Uh, or one notable exception, I should say. The town is proposing to allow electronic signs in more locations than the code currently allows. Under the current sign code, electronic signs are only allowed at gas stations, and those signs are only allowed to display time, temperature, and gas prices. Uh, these are content-based regulations because the regulations explicitly explicitly state what the sign can say uh and prohibit anything else from being displayed on that sign. There's been some stakeholder feedback over the the course of the last few months, uh, suggesting a desire uh on the part of some to see more electronic advertising in town. Uh, now staff, listen to that feedback uh and is proposing in the draft code to allow uh first all existing electronic signs to remain. Uh, that we're going to remove uh the limits concerning sign content, uh, obviously because we have to, those are content-based designations. And uh, we're proposing to allow new electronic signage to be installed in four zoning districts, the CAC, the RAC, the CC, and the IM, uh, subject to meeting specific design standards. Uh, the design standards allow electronic signs in ground-mounted signs, so monument signs, ones that are are sticking out of the ground, and limit the number of electronic signs to one per property. Uh, the proposed code is a touch more permissive than what the town currently has, uh, which, you know, reflects constituent sentiment uh and the increased prevalence of electronic signage, you know, across the country, really. Uh, but these regulations still very much preserve reasonable aesthetic controls uh and and don't by any means open the door to this looking uh like a a Las Vegas-style uh strip advertising situation. Be happy to answer any questions the council has concerning illuminated signs.
This is TJ. Less a question. I'm uh not generally in favor of relaxing the electronic uh part of that. I just want to share that.
I appreciate the feedback. It's uh, you know, the districts that uh that, because we kicked this around with with Michelle and her team quite a bit, and the zoning districts they identified are are largely those zoning districts that gas stations are allowed in currently. So the idea wasn't to open the floodgates at all. It was more an acknowledgement of of what's out there. Uh, there may be opportunities for, you know, limited implementation of these moving forward too, but we've we've tried really hard to uh not let go of the reins on this, so it's going to be uh something you'll see all that, all that frequently. Okay, next slide, please.
Uh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Fender has a comment. I'm not sure if you can see the chat, Mr. Jones.
You know what? I I missed that, and I'm sorry.
Okay, Councilmember Fender?
Yes, I wanted to follow up with that. What are the zoning districts, the CAC and the CC? What are those stand for?
Michelle, you might have the acronyms more handy than I do.
Sure, um, that's the Commercial Activity Center and um Community Commercial, or the name is alluding to me, but they are two of our commercial zoning districts.
Okay.
Now, with uh, the land use plan update was mentioned earlier, you know, with that, you know, the CAC district goes away. So when we're talking about later UDO updates, this is an example of the ripple effects that that's going to have, or we're going to have to make some adjustments throughout the code. Um, but these are based off of your current zoning districts.
Okay, they just don't seem very common. I haven't really seen them that often. Um, but I'm generally not in favor of relaxing the um the restrictions with electronic signs either.
Mayor Pretend Johnson, please.
So I think what would be really helpful, um, I'm going through the code here, and I don't see examples of of these electronic signs. Maybe if you could, Michelle, if you could email a couple of examples, um, that might be helpful. I I I guess I could go drive by a gas station to understand what we're talking about, but if you could give some other examples um besides a gas station, where they potentially, or how they could potentially be used.
Yes, absolutely. We can do that.
Thank you.
If there aren't any more questions on illuminated signs, uh, we can move on to definitions. Uh, so we we revised uh UDO to uh incorporate new definitions. Uh, these changes are primarily uh driven by the fact that we've replaced your your content-based sign designations with content-neutral sign designations. And as I touched on earlier, it's a little bit more difficult to uh at first blush, see yard sign and understand what that means. So uh, we have included definitions defining the new sign types uh that uh will reduce staff's need to rely on common understanding or common usage of these terms when they're having conversations with customers and constituents. Uh, and we've, you know, added definitions for new signs that we've introduced, as well as, you know, vehicle sign, swing sign, and some of the other new terms that aren't included in the the current uh code. So really just some clarifying updates and and some additional color around the margins uh to help staff administer the code a bit more effectively. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council has about the definition section. Okay. Uh, next slide, please. And that that concludes my comments uh for tonight, but uh, as as I said earlier, I'm happy to answer any questions the the council has. Uh, and and we can take it from there.
I was just following along on the packet that I downloaded earlier, and it seemed like some of the uh section numbers that you were using didn't match to what we were presented. So I'm not sure if I'm just missing something, but if you can clarify that for next time. Um, Mayor Pretend Johnson?
So I I have a question as it relates to temporary signs. And it's specifically political signs. So political signs fall under temporary signs. Is that correct? Let's start there.
Yeah, so political signs are a unique animal. Uh, they they would be a temporary sign, uh, correct, yes.
So when you talked about the material that can be used, you were pretty specific, and I'm looking in the code now to make sure I I even understand. So there are only specific materials that can be used even for political signs. Is that correct?
So uh, there there is a caveat there. So political signs are a a subset of temporary sign, but uh, if you, going all the way back to the applicability section, which is the second one we talked about tonight. Uh, they are actually, they are uh exempt from sign permit, and we've lined up uh the town's political sign regulations with general statutes. Uh, a lot of that reflects what you currently have on the books, but we also didn't want to depart from general statutes because that's, that's kind of a best practice. Uh, so those those material standards that we have in the temporary sign section, those aren't reflective in general statute. So those would not apply to the political signs, so whether it's a referendum issue, or a candidate, or or what have you, uh, they are, they are treated differently. So uh, you're right, they're a temporary sign, but they're a little bit, little bit of a different animal.
Okay, that's fine. And the only reason I was asking, because if we're going to change that, um, I think, you know, we need to be able to share that with the political um organizations, parties, candidates, moving forward, especially next year. But, okay, so that the the material does not change. That was my.
Correct. Yeah, we've, we've kept, we've, we've uh mirrored uh the statute. So then there's no material regulations in the statute, and and it's a great point. If you're going to change the rules, you you need to, we'd have to get the word out to make sure people understand before they start putting signs out. Any other questions or comments?
I was just waiting to make sure that Mayor Pretend was done. I had a quick question, if you could clarify. Um, so we're enacting these regulations. Do HOAs have the ability to go beyond what we do?
In in terms of uh enacting more strict regulations?
Yeah.
Yes, they absolutely do. Uh, so if you're, if you're a homeowner and you live in a homeowners association, you have to, uh, at a minimum, comply with uh what the town has enacted, but if there's private covenants that govern your development as well, you'd also have to comply with those. Now, of course, the town doesn't enforce the HOA covenants. It would be a a whole different enforcement mechanism. But yes, there are several layers of potential regulation that would apply.
Okay, so I think it's important that when we do our messaging on this, also emphasize that we don't handle HOA stuff. Uh, just to make it very clear for people about that. Uh, you said that there's a whole nother level. Are there any other organizations that have any kind of authority other than HOAs and us?
HOAs and and municipalities are are the two uh most common players, you know, but it could be as simple as uh, you know, there's, there's restrictive covenants that are uh recorded against commercial property uh that restrict how that property can be used, and in some cases, what types of signage can be displayed. That's a less common example. Uh, you typically see it more in HOA, uh, CCRs and inspirations, uh, and then again in sign code.
Okay, this has been a very helpful presentation. Any other, um, and also want to recognize the Planning and Zoning Board for their work on this at their September twenty-fourth meeting. They really dug in on a lot of this, and I see some of their suggestions have already been incorporated. Did any other council members have any comments or questions? Okay, so tell us about next steps.
Sure, so uh, we've got uh the public hearing, which I believe is uh scheduled or tentatively scheduled for November tenth. Uh, and then adoption would be two weeks after that, I believe, and and Michelle, I, please correct me if my dates are wrong.
That's correct.
Okay, if we have any questions in the meantime, we should email those to you, Ms. Steagle.
Yes, if you could, that would be great. Uh, that we could look into those ahead of time prior to the next meeting.
Okay, excellent. Thank you both very much.
Thank you so much.
Now we're going to move on to item ten B. Eric Smith, our town clerk, will facilitate this item, which is resolution appointing advisory board and committee members.
Uh, good afternoon, members of council. Looks like I've been um saved for last again, so hopefully I can get through this item for you guys. Um, official recruitment for a fallen board and committee appointments begin on October fifth and closed at five PM on October the twenty-seventh. Um, we did extend the recruitment, the recruitment window from its initial October twentieth deadline just to allow a little bit more time for citizen engagement and outreach. Um, during the recruitment process, we had a total of six new applications received, and there were five eligible applicants that were remaining on file from the previous twelve months. Um, two applications that we received were unfortunately after the submission deadline, so to ensure a fair process to all applicants, these applications will be kept on file for consideration during the next recruitment cycle. Um, let's go over the um, the current vacancies. The Mooresville Environment and Stormwater Committee has one vacancy with two applicants on file. And also, please note that the documents that you are looking at are not the most updated documents, as the um submission period did not close until five PM. But these documents will be updated and we'll republish them to the website for um public viewing. Okay, uh, the Mooresenvi- Mooresville Environment and Stormwater Committee has one vacancy with two applicants on file. The Public Education Advisory Committee has one vacancy with five applicants on file. Um, correction, there's six applicants because we did receive one final applicant today. As the district member minimums have been met for the Public Education Advisory Committee, the vacancy can be filled by a resident from any district. The Performance Measures Advisory Committee has one vacancy with two applicants on file. And the Senior Advisory Committee has one vacancy with one applicant on file. On the afternoon of October the twenty-eighth, council will receive an application packet and electronic ballots that'll cover all appointments. Um, we're going to ask that council complete these electronic ballots and return them to the town clerk in the later than November fourth at five PM for initial tallying. Um, the results of this tallying will be announced at the November tenth meeting, where council will be asked to appoint any selected applicants. All the ballots, of course, will remain as part of the agenda item and the public record. If runoff is needed following that initial balloting, council members will receive electronic ballots on the morning of November tenth. Council members that are going to participate virtually will be asked to return those completed runoff ballots to the town clerk via email by five PM on November tenth. And council members that are going to be participating in person can submit their runoff ballots to the town clerk via email by five PM on November tenth or in person prior to the start of the meeting. Um, that's going to be all for me, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have regarding the recruitment.
While we're waiting for questions, I just want to say, say thank you for uh streamlining this process for us and for extending the window until five PM today. Uh, looking forward to taking a look at these applications um and turning in our votes in a timely manner so that we can fill up those committees and keep them humming along. I don't see any other questions or comments, so uh silence means assent to your plan. Uh, so please get us that information as soon as you can. It looks like uh just tomorrow, we're going to be getting those full packets, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I cut you off. Go ahead, Eric.
Uh, no, I apologize. Um, I just wanted to remind council, like I said earlier, this item is going to be updated tomorrow to include um the full application pack and all the um information that that uh was submitted by the applicant. So um, it's going to be published for full transparency on the website uh tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, well, you did a great job, and you brought us back into time on the agenda, so well done.
Bless.
Um, now we're at item eleven, future meetings, events, and citizen and opportunities. I want to know, the town office will be closed on November eleventh for Veterans Day and on November twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh for the Thanksgiving holiday. Please save the date, Friday, December fourth. We are, we do not know what form our annual tree lighting will take this year, but we are hoping to keep our tradition of the first Friday of December to start the holiday season. Um, now we're at item twelve, council and manager comments. I'm going to start with uh Mayor Pretend Johnson, followed by myself. Mayor Pretend.
So first, I just want to thank our communications department, our Parks and Recs department, our police department, um, and I think I've got everybody. If there was another department, I've I've missed them, but all the departments that helped with the drive-through trick-or-treat event that was held over the weekend, it was a wonderful event, and it was um, it was really nice to be able to see our citizens who we rarely get, rarely get to see um these days, especially in those numbers. And of course, everything was done in a very safe manner, so um, I thank all those um that led that effort, especially the communication. So I thank all those that led that effort, especially the communications department. Also want to give a shout out to Mark Spinoli and, and Martha, you're going to have to help me with the node's last name. I'm not going to be able to pronounce his last name.
Cora Tagare.
Cora Tagare. Okay, thank you. They did a presentation on the Morrisville Carpenter Road project last week. They held actually three different virtual events to present to the public. I was able to participate in one event, and it was very well done. They did a very good job, so I thank them. And then, again, anyone else that may have been involved behind the scenes in that event, I guess IT, administration, I don't know. All of you that were involved, thank you for doing that. I think this is, we are learning in the world of COVID how to engage and communicate with our citizens virtually, and I appreciate all that everyone is doing to that end. And then the last thing I'm just going to say is I'm going to urge everyone to please go out and vote. Election Day is a week from today, so November 3rd. This election is important. All elections are important. So please get out and do your civic duty and exercise your responsibility to vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tim. I'm going to go, and then I'll be followed by Councilmember Fender. I was also going to thank Communications, Park Rec, and all the supporting departments for a very fun and successful trick-or-treat. Lots of great costumes and smiles. Also, the Morrisville Carpenter Road outreach events went really well, so thank you for that. I want to special shout out to Rodney Watkins and Brad West, who spearheaded our census efforts here in Morrisville. From the fun video at the beginning to the many signs and days at the food hub, they and others went above and beyond to make sure that Morrisville was fully counted this time around. For the next 10 years, we will benefit from all your hard work, so thank you so much. Every time, I'm going to be saying the three Ws are important. We need to keep on top of this virus and try to control the spread. Additionally, please download the Slow COVID NC app on your phone and enable your Bluetooth, and that will help us contain the spread and do effective contact tracing because we all want to get back to normal as quickly as possible. Now I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender for comments, followed by Councilmember Robati. Councilmember Fender?
Hi. I wasn't going to have any comments, but then Mayor Pro Tim Johnson reminded me of voting, which is extremely important right now. I was just going to note that we have four days left of early voting. You can vote early up to Saturday from 8:00 to 3:00, and then election day. So please go out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Rao.
Vote, 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 vote. And I had a great time at the Halloween thing. I know that it was not what, not the usual setup for the Morrisville Halloween Day, but it was a great, great event, and I had a great time. And I know that everyone was really appreciative of all the hard work that went into it, so thank you all. And I'd also like to briefly thank staff for their great presentations last night. I always think I know what they do, and then I learn a lot every time that happens. So, you know, just a big shout out to all of the staff that worked so hard, and thank you for letting us know about that.
Great. Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Thank you. I'm having some Wi-Fi issues, so if you don't hear me, I might be not clear. Ditto on all the points just made by my council members. And I'm going to just make one comment about, I want to thank all the department heads yesterday for their wonderful presentations at a work session. And I'm very excited about the Smart Morrisville initiative and our focus areas. And I think that it's a great opportunity, if you're listening, we live in one of the most technologically advanced cities with so many people working in the tech industry. So if you're listening to our livestream and you're in the tech industry, we encourage you to be a part of Smart Morrisville and the Open Data and all the different things we want to do. We're finally going to have some great opportunities, especially getting involved with our smart city steering committees. So if we do our job right, I think we can be one of the smartest towns in the state and country, so we look forward to that. Excited to kick off the Morrisville Carpenter Road project. And just a kudos to this council and previous councils who have been dedicated to transportation. Pulled off the equipment extension, I remember in 2013 when our council identified this road, Morrisville Carpenter Road, as a project, and we stuck to our guns, great work by our staff. We continue to make investments in our road network hearing the concerns of citizens. Finally, I just want to remind everybody that we're back to school, and the Virtual Academy, for just a reminder to those of you listening, has been extended to November 4th for middle school and high school. And if they want to continue to do that, and also December 6th through 9th. On that note, I just want to make a final comment on a partner that we're all very familiar with, UNC Healthcare System. And Mayor Colley and I recently attended, about a year ago, the UNC Panther Creek ribbon cutting with Senator Nichols. But I just want to remind the public an amazing thing that I learned, that the UNC Healthcare System donated 42,000 K95 masks to the Wake County Public School System. And they're non-medical-grade masks, which provide better protection than the standard face coverings, and they fit really well for the teachers and the staff. And UNC Health has been putting out a call to the community for help. And I really want to thank Gary Park, my friend, he's actually from West Virginia, Steve Burse, the CEO of Triangle Region, used to be CEO of Rex, Gary Parks was COO, and Dr. Wesley Burks, and all of the leaders at UNC Rex and UNC Health, who are doing everything they can to help us deal with this pandemic. I want to thank all the frontline workers who are doing a great job. So just a real shout out to UNC Health tonight and for their partnership with our school system. So thank you. That's all I have. Smart Morris.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to have a shout out and echo what several others have said is that the Morrisville Carpenter Road information sessions to our neighborhoods that are aligned on the Morrisville Carpenter roadway. I felt that those information sessions were well-received, and the information that we were able to hear was very valuable. I have actually put out a request to have a frequently asked questions document created from those sessions because there was just so much rich information. It would be amiss if we weren't able to share that information going forward because I think those same questions are going to be asked for the next two years. And we could update them over time, of course, but it would be nice if we could be able to memorialize some of those questions for now. And then the other item I would like to say is that early voting that goes until Saturday, like many have said. However, you cannot register to vote on the day of the election, November 3rd. But you can register to vote and vote the same day when you go to an early voting site. So not only go vote, but if you haven't registered, you still have time to do that so that you can vote in this election. So thank you all for your attention, and we really appreciate community engagement. Thanks.
Councilmember Garamella, please. Councilmember Garamella?
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, I was on the same thing what Martha did. Okay, yeah, I think everything has been said. I would only emphasize, go out and vote, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize Town Manager Paige for any comments from staff.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I am in the process of updating our rolling calendar. We've been moving some things around to manage the length of our meetings. So I'm going to be sending that to council members tomorrow. Also, we'll follow up with a repeat copy of a memo that I sent you in late September outlining some strategies and options we may consider. And then I'll be following up with you individually over the rest of the week to try to get some collective feedback to share with the group. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Strategic Planning Manager, Erin Hudson, have any comments tonight?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. One quick comment I did want to share. We have actually had some requests from a couple of our advisory boards and committees with interest in establishing subcommittees to cover some of the work topics that they are discussing. And so just wanted to bring that to council's attention, that staff is going to work on developing and enhancing the procedural guidelines that relate to subcommittees within the appointed public bodies policy and are going to be bringing that back to you all for your consideration, review, and subsequent approval here in the near term. We don't have an established date for that just yet. I wanted to let you all know that that's an interest area of your committees and that staff has heard that request, and we want to be able to give that definition and focus to them as well.
Okay, if you have a chance to send us any kind of current literature we have on it, so we can be familiar with it, no. To be prepared for what's coming, that would be helpful.
We'll get that to you.
Okay, thank you very much for that. At this point, does Town Manager have anything else for the good of the body before we entertain the closed session motion?
No, sir.
Okay, so we have done, we are done with the public portion of the meeting. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session. We have two closed sessions this evening. The first is to discuss matters relating to economic development, and the second is to discuss matters of attorney-client privilege. I'll recognize Councilmember Rao to take us into closed session.
Yeah, Mayor, give me one second, please.
Of course.
Okay. Mayor and council, I move that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina Statute 143.1318.11A4 to discuss a matter of economic development pursuant to 143.318.11A3 to consult with the town attorney on matters of attorney-client privilege. On matters of attorney-client privilege, including the pending cases of triangle grading and paving versus Morrisville and Shenandoah Homes versus Morrisville.
Thank you. I have a motion to go into closed session. Do I hear a second? I'd like to recognize Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
I will second.
Okay, if Town Clerk Smith can please do a roll call on the motion to enter closed session, please.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion entered closed session passes unanimously.
Very much. So we are now in closed session.